I want to, I want to do something like that, but I want to make sure we can keep the comments off. Um, so that we don't get bombarded like, you know, people do on Facebook with a million things going on too. So I'm trying to work on that right now, but yeah, our website, I did ask Jesse that, I think after last meeting and Jesse said, our website just doesn't have that capacity.
Okay.
So we'll figure it out hopefully soon. Hi, Marlon. Hi, Jason. Thank you guys for coming in and helping and joining.
Hey Jessica.
Good evening.
No problem.
Let us know how we can help.
I will for sure. I'll probably chime you guys in whenever I get kind of stuck. It looks like we have James and Pat that aren't here yet.
Hey everybody, how's it going?
Good.
Very good. How you doing Mayor?
I don't know. I'll tell you in a couple hours. Looks like uh, we had quite the book to read through this month, but wasn't too heavy of reading. It wasn't too technical.
No. And so, and some of these letters we've gotten have been pretty interesting.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Very interesting. That's one nice thing about this community is we have some really good researchers to get, to save us a lot of homework. Or Jessica. One of those agendas that you look at and it's, oh, it won't be that bad. There's only a few items, but unfortunately there.
Big ones.
And it looks like, I'm assuming that Mr. Carmen and Mr. Gosner are here for the water infrastructure?
Yes, they were the two, they are civilist engineering and then RCAC. I had them both come on to help too. If we had questions and concerns, they would easier to answer some of them.
Awesome. We will try to get through our uh, regular business as fast as possible.
Okay.
We'll get there for you gentlemen.
Thank you gentlemen very much for attending and helping us.
Of course. Yeah, it'd be good if we had just a couple of minutes to be able to at least tell the group like, who we are and why we're here, just a slight background.
Absolutely, absolutely. Very important part of the agenda and I imagine we'll be seeing you again in the future, so.
Unless you fix all your water system problems in the next few days, then probably, yeah.
I broke my magic wand, so I am sorry to say that is not going to happen.
We only have forty percent left to go and then we'll be in the good, so.
Like your shirt, Mr. Grimm.
Pat?
Yes ma'am.
I thought we had agreed either last year or the year before not to do any more of these proclamations.
Yeah, this one is just a presentation. I didn't catch that there was a proclamation as well. I thought the same thing Caroline.
That's just, that's what he had written in the note that he had sent me, so I just kind of wrote it down there. So I'm not quite sure. So if you guys don't want to, that's fine, but that's what he had written in the um, in the email that he had sent me.
Right, and Jessica, you weren't here last year for that, but we do get a lot of rhetorical, proclamations and some of them are actually, you know, they're pretty important to where we don't want to just do the knee jerk acceptance of things and that's where we came with, to that determination for the proclamations.
Got it, okay.
Alright, so we're looking at five twenty-nine.
This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, it's five thirty and, and uh, just because I only have the six screens, is, is James present?
Yes, he is.
If we have Jason and Marlon turn off their cameras, then we can get James and Gary and get on it. There we go, there you go.
Now if I turn off my camera, I'll have James here. I see James. I see James.
Oh, nope.
Now I got Mr. Grimm, darn it. Alrighty, don't let me forget James. We will go ahead and open up this uh, virtual session of the common council of the city of Port Orford for Thursday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at five thirty. Uh, thank you all for coming. Uh, we'll call this meeting to order. As far as attendance, it looks like everyone is here. Myself, Mayor Cox, Councillor Tidy, Councillor LaRoche, Councillor Kessler, Councillor Burns, Councillor Pogweds and Councillor Garrett. Uh, so everyone is here. Uh, is there any additions to the agenda? Okay, so we'll move right into our presentations. Is Mr. Clay here? Gordon, are you here? Okay, uh, so we'll put that on placeholder. We're gonna go ahead and move to the consent calendar, give them five or ten minutes, uh, just so we don't hold anyone up, so. Uh, four A, the minutes for August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And we can also make a motion for both minutes if you like, but it's not really the cleanest way to, to do it, so. Uh, if anyone wants to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of August nineteenth. As written.
I second that.
Alright, so Lauren seconds. Do we have any discussion for August nineteenth? Okay, I'm not hearing a whole lot, so I'm gonna go ahead and call, ask for the vote on that. James?
James, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
And Tim?
Tim, yes.
Okay, moving on to four B, minutes from August twenty-seventh.
I'm sorry, Pat, we have a caller number three that is talking and his mute, his mic isn't muted, so I'm getting a lot of that background noise.
Sorry about that. Caller number three, could you mute your microphone please or your phone? Alrighty. Did we get a motion on four B? Anybody moved to accept those yet?
I make a motion that we, that we accept and uh, the session minutes of August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Second that. Well, second that.
Okay, that first and the second. Any discussion on that? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and just pull the trigger on that too. Tim?
Tim, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
And Gary?
Gary, yes.
Alright, Mr. Clay, are you here by any chance? Alright, so now we're gonna be moving on to citizen concerns and this is for old and new business on the agenda. Uh, obviously, whatever public comment we have, you're more than welcome to speak for your three minutes. If you do hear someone that uh, that is already given, you know, the same opinion that you have, please consider uh, saving some time for us. But like I say, you're more than welcome to speak, obviously. Um, so we'll open it up for citizens' concerns. As usual on Zoom meetings, it's kind of cumbersome, so. Go ahead and speak up if you have a citizen concern.
Eve Lawton? Yes, thank you City Council. I, I'm not gonna take a lot of time. I sent you quite a bit of information. But I think what's more important, the testimony I provided you was factual, not anecdotal. And I think that's critical for us to consider when we look at vacation rentals. I think too many times cities consider anecdotal information rather than hard facts. And clearly we're seeing a significant problem on the Oregon coast. We're seeing many, many cities struggling with vacation rentals. We saw last month Coos Bay placing a moratorium on vacation rentals. And lo and behold, they found out that only ten of the eighty-two were listed with business licenses and paying their TLT. We've subsequently seen Lincoln City, Gerhart, Manzanita, Yahots, uh, also limiting the number of VR uh, vacation rentals. Walport is in the process of considering them and I'm sure you're all aware of the very contentious uh, recent Lincoln County ballot measure that's moving forward uh, in Lincoln County. So these are serious problems. If the city council is serious about affordable housing, we need to limit vacation rentals. They detract and they create problems for affordable housing. If the city council is serious about water and wants our community to live within our natural limits and ensure that the local residents and the tourists that we have right now have adequate water, we need to vote and restrict vacation rentals. And our economy will not be harmed. Uh, clearly we've seen recently that uh, restaurants such as The Red Fish, I talked with both Chris, I also talked with Diana Crazy Norwegians. They have a record year to date this year. So we aren't harming our economy when we have a current housing boom right now and there's actually a, a long wait to find a builder in town. But I think what's also more important is to look at the reality, look at some of the studies that have been done, very good research studies that show that vacation rentals really do not provide the type of significant economic returns to communities that a lot of people anecdotally talk about. Airbnb is great at spinning these stories, but we find out that most of this money does not flow into the community. It flows directly into Airbnb and through Visa and the internet. Our banks don't touch that. Most vacation rental people uh, look at, as I've said in my report, uh, the kitchen is the number one amenity that they look for. They bring their food, they bring their beverages. They occasionally may go out to eat. With COVID, they're surely not going out to eat a lot. And so they're, besides some of the discretionary expenditures, we're seeing the vast majority of that revenue stream leaving our community and not touching our local economy. And so I think that's important to consider that. We also need to consider that thirty-three of the forty-six vacation rentals and we know that that's probably under-reported by looking at other communities, that thirty-three or seventy-two percent of them have washers. And I think that's a serious concern. And these, these vacation rentals are not mom and pop renting out a room. These are vacation rentals that average uh, five point one uh, customers per unit. Uh, they are three times larger than the average household size uh, in Port Orford and two times larger than the average family size in Port Orford. Um, so I really want us to consider if we want to live within our means that we should restrict vacation rentals. I hope we're not a community that waits too long, harms our livability and grows beyond our water uh, supply. And if you have any questions, I'm willing to take them from my research.
Uh, thank you Steve. Uh, we usually don't do any questioning during citizens' concerns. We may call on you during that facet of the agenda though, because I really appreciate all the facts that you did gather and as usual, you're a great asset. Uh, and you're really good at gathering the factual information for us, so it's much appreciated and we'll probably be tapping into your resource here shortly.
Okay, thank you.
And a reminder of the three minute time limit. Because of Steve's hard work, I did let it go over a little bit. Do we have any other public comment? Really? There's people other than Steve, right?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, this is Colleen Eifon.
Hi Colleen.
Hi, um, sorry, we were just listening um, to the gentleman that just spoke. And as you know, that we managed the vacation and long-term rentals in Port Orford for about six years. And I appreciate the research he did, but it was far inaccurate on some of it. Um, and it was contradictory with the vacation rentals, our garbage bill for, oh, let's see, we managed twenty-one homes that was in the city and the county. Um, and just for the homes that we managed, our garbage bill was over fifteen hundred dollars a month. And we go in and clean the homes and there was a significant amount of stuffings done at the local businesses. And if you look at numbers or maybe talk to local business owners that have been in the, in business for at least, you know, the last ten years, I'm sure they'll show you the numbers have significantly increased every year along with the vacation rentals. Uh, and so it's, it's been a, a huge impact on the economy for the local business owner and I think it's been huge. And additionally, with the uh, long-term rentals and the vacation rentals, I know the water was brought up as an issue, while we handled the billing for some of the long-term rentals as well as the vacation rentals. And I had, we, we kept all of our paperwork, so if you need the uh, documentation to prove it, I can try to find it for you. It might take a little bit of time, but the long-term rentals were using significantly more water than the vacation rentals were. And so we do have the numbers to back it up. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding numbers and statistics. Um, I'm not on one side or the other specifically. Um, but I am happy to answer like any, any questions that you have truthfully uh, with the information that we have gathered during our time in business.
Thank you, Colleen. Um, and just so you know, we, at the end of the meeting, we will have another opportunity for commenting, so regardless, you will have a follow-up. So thank you for the information though, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, who's next? Wow. Going once, going twice. That's very, very surprising, okay.
I, I'd like to go.
Go for it then.
Well, as a citizen, I have to uh, say.
As a citizen named John Isador living where?
Right, Port Orford Loop, within the city limits.
Thank you.
Uh, twenty-six thirty-eight, twenty-six forty-eight, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, we get the idea. Old highway is close enough.
I think we have to be careful when we regulate what a individual can do with his property. Um, it'd be like telling an RV park that they can't add any more spaces. Um, I see it as a benefit, like the last person that spoke. They spend their money in town, they buy commodities, they use water, they use sewer. Um, my only concern would be if maybe a whole neighborhood was bought up and then you'd have an individual that was a full-time owner that was living in a community that had like nine rentals and you had all the traffic, the noise and whatnot. But I think we have to be careful when we start limiting people of what they can do with their properties. Understand there should be, we should definitely have a set of rules about, you know, the whole gist of how long and uh, the amount of terms and all that stuff, but I think we gotta be careful when we start telling people what to do with their properties. Uh, if I was a young guy and I couldn't make my bills and I decided to lease out my downstairs to somebody so I could make my bills, I, I think that's a viable aspect of, that's the way Airbnb started. And maybe we need to get down towards that where we put rules where you gotta be an onsite owner or something like that. But we gotta be careful how we regulate what people do with their properties, I think. Just my two cents.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? I'm still surprised. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to departmental reports. Uh, we'll try to get through this as fast as possible. Uh, back to you, John, it looks like.
Hey, I got good news. We got a little more water than we had last time in our reservoir and it's kind of maintaining a little over two feet, so um, we've seen the reduction of usage by the restrictions by quite a bit. We're actually uh, making more than we're using during the daytime, so that's a good thing. Um, as you can see, we had a, a bunch of leaks and uh, we had one this week that we took care of. So we're kind of uh, actually gaining for the first time. Uh, yeah, right? We were able to make some temporary repairs to Coast Guard Hills and pump shack. We were able to switch over to the pump that uh, wasn't in service and it's running better than the one that was. Um, flowed the leaks down into pump stations for the time being with some creative uh, creative rubber wrapping and some hose clamps, so that's a positive thing. Um, we've done some services and got a few things knocked out. Wastewater has been running somewhat pretty smooth. Still got a bunch of stuff to do down there, but we're spending most of our time on the water side right now. You know, uh, that's, that's about it. I'm not gonna beat this up. You guys had my report, you can kind of see it. If you have questions, I'll be glad to answer it.
Go ahead, Tim.
So John, I had a question for you. Um, I've noticed in the last few reports um, that you are having to spend an awful lot of time at the toilets in Battle Rock bathrooms. What, what can we do to help you with that? As a councillor, many years ago, we approved new stainless steel toilets down there. We thought that was gonna resolve the problem, but obviously it has not. So what I'm concerned with is how much time you guys are having to actually spend down there.
Well, it's amazing how much time we spend down there unplugging and fixing stuff. I think my, my thought plan with Battle Rock, because that's our biggest uh, point of problems is, I think we're gonna put a pressure tank in there. I think what's happened is the high flush valves that were put in is uh, taking more than the water pressure that we have at the system. And I think when you get two or three toilets at the same time, you lose pressure on one side or the other, causing the plugs. And we are spending an amazing amount of time down there unplugging toilets, so. I'm gonna try putting a forty gallon, fifty gallon pressure tank in there and see if that will kind of create enough pressure that so they can all operate at the same time. Because what we found when we were unplugging them last week, we flushed the women's side and the men's side at the same time. And one side didn't flush very well. In fact, it stopped flushing. So then we went, oh, you know, the aha moment. Um, we're losing pressure due to the volume of those high flushers. So, next step is to get a pressure tank in there and see if we can't keep the flow rate where it should be. And hopefully that solves it. Otherwise, maybe we can give that bathroom to the state or somebody else? I'm reaching here, but.
Thank you, John. I appreciate it and I appreciate you looking at it because I hate for you guys to spend so much time doing that, because I know your time is so valuable.
Yeah, Roger.
I got one for you, John, but I'm not sure if I know quite how to ask it. Clearly. So I was looking at the water rate, the, the water loss. We have our leaks, we have the water pumped and we have the water sold. So we got, we got gone down quite a bit last month and we have a million gallon tank. So, it doesn't seem like we're accounting for that, you know, a couple hundred thousand in the tank and it wouldn't help us that much, but it would shave maybe five percent off and I don't know how we could really capture that number. But it just seems like it makes our, our total not quite true.
What, what number are you talking about? Uh, what are we not capturing?
The water in the tank. Like we pump into the tank and that's sitting in the tank and just because it hasn't been sold yet, doesn't mean we've lost it. Because it's a million gallon tank, so we could have a couple hundred thousand sitting in, you know, difference.
But what you're, everything's metered, so what's going out is metered, right? As far as the connections. And what we make is how it's balanced, so as you're making it up, it's not really like you have an extra couple hundred thousand gallons in there. You're actually monitoring what you're putting in and what you're taking out.
I understand, but you're only monitoring what you're pumping in and what you're selling. So the water sitting in the tank isn't accounted for. I'm just trying to gain a few percentages off of our loss and that, that was somewhere I thought it might.
Okay, I'll tell you what, we're losing forty-five percent.
Gotcha.
Okay, no, um, honestly, I think after talking with Jason, I think he's on here, I hope. He's gonna chime in.
Yes, I am. If, if you'd like me to help out. Take off.
Hi Jason, thanks for being here. So, I think what we're seeing is, and Jason's gonna probably expand here more. Um, when we went through the system and looked at all the problems, we, we, we're leaving out the part that we have a bunch of million plus meters out there that need to get changed now. So I would think that a good percentage of our loss rate is probably in not accurate meter reading. Okay, and then we know we have the leaks, we know have, we have bad service lines, we, you know, we've got all that stuff, so I, I think between a meter replacement of all the ones that are well over a million, we changed one that Ed yesterday's. Uh, almost seven million, six million uh, miles on it, okay? So it's way past its lifetime. So how many of those are out? There's a lot. They started a program, I think a year or so ago. Got some done, but we're a long ways away, so that's kind of where we want to get to this electronic uh, meter reading because with the new electronic meter reading, they do acoustic sound waves and they will detect leaks within quadrants and then automatically flag where this leak is coming from. And next council meeting, I'm hoping to have the guy, um, the rep from this company for these meters uh, do a presentation for you folks to let you know how they work and what the cost is gonna be and everything. Um, I'm actually really looking at starting to put in those meters. Only because if we had them in, we can add the electronics um, meter reading later. Um, and they're not that much more than what we're using right now. And I think it's a really important feature. I've been reading a lot about it and there's a lot of companies that are coming up with a ton of revenue from doing electronic meters. But I think that's a huge portion of it. Um, the rest of it's the old transite lines and the one-inch polys. We've had a lot of polys, almost all the leaks we're doing are, are poly lines that are split. Kitchener yesterday was completely split in half. It's eleventh repair on that line. And I know that three other lines that have the same amount of repairs on.
Hey, gotcha. This is Jason Carmen. May I make a suggestion here really quick as far as the? This is Jason Carmen. May I make a suggestion here really quick as far as the, the water loss numbers? Is that all right?
Sure, please.
Okay, well, what I think is, um, and, and that we, we know we have, we have issues in different areas. And um, what I would say is, while I do um, agree that, that, you know, changing meters out and, and that, and what you're talking about, John, is a good step. I, I, I don't know, uh, without more data in the system, with a, a little bit more of a, of a higher level look at it, whether that's the, the best first step. And so I think that when we're talking about these, we know we have a lot of stuff. And I know that, that um, you are all living this real time. And so sometimes it's hard to sort of look at the, the little bit higher level. Okay, this is the more bang-for-the-buck thing to do. But I would, I would urge to maybe think about a, like an engineering report, you know? Um, because the, the way I saw it in the time that I was there, um, you know, we have some immediate things that we should take care of. And then I think we can make a really thoughtful plan to move forward, um, which is gonna include a lot of the stuff that you're talking about, John. And so like, that, that's what I would suggest, just in a um, kind of a measured approach to figure out where things are. Because it's, it's a little bit overwhelming, um, taking it as a, as the big piece.
Right. Sorry to send us down the rabbit hole there. I was just asking about the tank water, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but you are right. Pat, uh, Mayor, it, it is, if uh, you're, you're, um, if you gain in your reservoir, depending on the time when you do your calculations, if the reservoir gains, that demand technically comes off of what you, of your demand. And if it loses, then you've added to that demand. So it's, so, so yes, there is, there is that piece. I don't know that it's gonna be a huge portion of this, but we would have to sit down and look at that. Um, anyway, I'll.
We'll talk about them all here shortly. Uh, we'll move on. Thank you, John, for all that you guys do. We really appreciate it. And just to remind everybody and the community that John's, you know, finding this stuff because he's being proactive. And, and we have a lot of infrastructure that needs work. So all these, all these dreary reports we get are, are really a game. So, so he's chipping away at it and the crew, we can't tell you how much we appreciate you guys. And, and ladies.
Right.
Uh, okay, so we'll move on to Jessica's administration report.
Okay, so it's a nice long one, so I'll just kind of give some highlights from it. Um, I didn't put any of the water infrastructure stuff that I've done on here because it's something that we can talk about later. Um, so some of the other things that I talked about is reopening City Hall because it's been under construction for so long with regards to that payment window that is in the hallway between like the city council chambers, the police department, and then the office, City, City Hall office. Um, I had the building inspector come out, and unfortunately, al- almost every single thing that was done was done incorrectly. Um, not only is that a fireball wall, but with that being a firewall, the uh, trim around the window was wood, which you cannot put in a firewall because it'll catch on fire. The window was not a fire-rated window that was put in there. The um, countertop in there was also not fire-rated, so it could not be in there. And so, with all that being said, I talked to a new contractor because the contractor that is listed on our license, our building permit, is also not licensed. So that's another, another issue that we had to figure out. We have a new contractor that came in, and we had the two possible options for him to re-brick the wall up and/or just fix it all and get it to a payment window. The cost that we're looking at to get it to completely fix to be a payment, payment window is about thirty thousand dollars. I said, no, thank you, let's just re-brick it up. So we're gonna re-brick that window up and move some of that glass over to where Patty already is so she has a new, a nice little glass window since that glass is already there. But that's kind of what we're gonna do with that window right now. Um, another thing that I started doing, and I sent you guys all, was the utility billings. I went through all the ones that were inactive and went through and figured out which ones we could collect on based upon age and collectability, and ones that we could not. Unfortunately, the, we had to write off about fifty-five percent of it was uncollectible based upon ninety percent age. But there were some other things, like some people had passed away and some other things that couldn't be handled or done. So we started the collection process on the rest of it, and we started to get a good portion of it in the last few weeks. Um, the other portion, because I am looking for funds, obviously, to help John as much as possible in the meantime, is the traffic and ordinance fines. I printed out a list of citations that have balances. There was a hundred and thir- a hundred and thirty-six pages altogether. And on each page, we're talking about five to ten citations on each page, so that adds up very fast. I've talked to the Department of Revenue, and we are going to start to work with them on getting this stuff collected. They can do multiple things for us to collect some of these things, but we have to first send a notice to all these people that not only obviously are the licenses suspended, but this is gonna go to collections, which legally we can do. And once they give the notice and we don't receive anything back, then it can go to the Department of Revenue. So we started that process. I talked to the Department of Revenue again this afternoon, so we're working on getting an agreement made with them. Let me think. Um, on here, I also have Patty, obviously, is retiring at the end of this year. So I had to go through her job description. It did not have a lot of things on it that she currently does, and it did have some things that she no, no longer does. So I went through and talking with her and redid the job description. There are things on there that I left as an option. Um, like they had to be, they had to be able to be CJ, CJIS certified to be able to do some of the court duties. But my main focus of that job is trying to get the utilities because obviously that's a major and monthly revenue driver. So they need to be able to do the billing, the collections, also talk to customer service, and, you know, kind of a bunch of different things on there. Um, so I put that in there too, so we guys have the new job description, I think, in the new business. Another thing that we, that we've been working on, and actually Tammy did a really good job on, is the Business License Municipal Code. She went through it and went through and got a bunch of new licenses, a bunch of licenses that had not been done in the past. The amount of revenue that was in the budget for licenses was sixty-five hundred. We actually were able to get to nine thousand one hundred and sixty-two. So that's an additional, a little over twenty-five hundred in revenue this month, or this year, I'm sorry, for our business licenses. And there still are some that we can collect from, but we're trying to figure out how exactly to do that. In the Business License Code, there are ones that actually say for home businesses, you are able to collect licenses for those. But trying to find them and advertise, you know, is, it's kind of a catch-twenty-two. So we're trying to figure out how we're gonna do those things. Um, with that, there's a few other little things that, you know, we've kind of touched on. I talked about a little bit about volunteers. Um, so we're still kind of working on that. The Main Street Association reached out and showed interest in helping us with the outside of City Hall building and redoing some of the landscaping, so that was kind of nice. Um, with the kayak launch in Garrison Lake, I am meeting with them next week with regards to the grant. Since last year, the grant was, the grant deadline was missed. And then I'm also working with um, the Forest Management Planning Grant for the Watershed Project with the DEQ. And so they have a bunch of the information that they needed now, so they're starting to move a little bit more forward now, which is amazing. Um, like I said, some of the things I completed were the job description this month for Patty, the business license review and update, and also utility accounts um, that were inactive and write-off letters for them. So those are kind of the big things that we finished. The other ones, we're all working on. It's gonna take time.
Thank you, Jessica.
Yes.
Hey, when we uh, when we received those business licenses, do you have a ballpark on how many vacation rentals there were?
Um, so the vacation rentals for the TLT taxes is, um, if I remember correctly, it's a li- I think it was like forty-five or fifty that we had.
And that lines up with the business licenses?
Yes, some of them do, some of them don't, because that's again, something that we need to talk about. Because if they're privately owned, we don't, they don't have business licenses. So, that's one of the disconnects that we have with the vacation rentals, so.
Got it.
Yes, some of them do, some of them don't.
Gotcha. Tim, what do you got for us?
I've got two questions on the financial report. It says here on the Parks Fund, expenses were larger than budgeted because of the seasonal worker, seasonal worker. We budget for the seasonal worker.
I'm, hold on, I'm looking for what that. Oh, it was because, oh, a lot of it was just because of the demand that we had in July and August. So she had a little bit of extra time um, working for those times. That was it.
Okay, and on the Street Fund, expenses were larger than budgeted due to the eighty-one K bill by Civil West for Ocean View paving. I believe that grant we, we received was for one hundred thousand dollars.
We have not received all the money a hundred percent for that. So once the money, the rest of the money comes in, then it'll offset it.
So it'll take care of itself. Okay, very good, thank you.
It was eighty-one thousand dollars to engineer one lift of paving on Ocean View Street?
Um, it, that included the paving, it included today's little.
That, that's, okay, that's for the whole thing. Gotcha. Then with terms of engineering, it kind of struck a, a alarm, brother.
No, yeah, that's everything to date, and we still have some extra money with that. And so Civil West has reached out to me to see if there's anything else we want to do with that extra money. So, we're trying to see what we can do with regards to that.
Gotcha. And I do have one question that Gary brought to my attention, and I thought I had an answer for him. But looking back at the general fund, our revenue is budgeted for seven fifty-one, and our expenses are budgeted for eight eighty-two. So does that mean that our budget was budgeted for a hundred and thirty thousand dollar loss?
Uh, actually, that's funny and something that Tammy and I have discussed. The budget was definitely was a lot. I don't know the best way to put it, but it was going down every month, the revenue, every year. The revenue was going down every single year, the last four years on the budget. I don't know why. It's something that we've noticed. It kind of seems to the two of us that it was, you know, kind of predicting a downfall for some reason. Um, but that's what the budget, if you look at the budget compared to previous years, every year, every single thing has dropped for the revenue.
Hmm.
It was kind of an interesting comparison I ran, and I don't mind sharing that with you guys if you want me to send it to you. But Tammy and I did a little analysis because we thought it was interesting.
Yeah, maybe you should just put it in a financial packet next month.
I can definitely do that.
Or whenever you want, really. It'd be nice to chew on for a while. Does anybody else have any questions on the finance? Okay. Let's go ahead and agenda go. So we will move on to planning. Do we have any planning report?
There was one in the package.
Anyone have any questions on the planning report we received in the packet? Pretty informational. Okay, and I am thinking Gordon Clay is not going to show up today. So, we'll move on to liaison reports. Counselor Garrett, do you have anything from the Fire District?
No, nothing.
Gotcha. Tim, TLT?
Nothing at this time, Pat. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Carolyn, uh, Watershed, I know they've been busy. Well, no, I scared her off. Oh, there she is.
Uh, Linda's here.
Oh, great. Linda, do you want to go ahead and uh, give us a, uh, or at least reiterate your email and, and give us all a report in the community?
Sure, I guess the first thing that I was gonna say was um, was the, how important it is to move forward with the Forest Management Plan. And I, it was very useful that I went to the Coalition of Oregon Land Trust Conference on Source Water Protection in Astoria last week, and I met there the, the person from DEQ who is their forestry expert. But he is willing to help us with the specific wording for the call for proposals. His name is Josh Seeds, and um, Jessica can reach out to him, and I think that will help us when we get to the point where we are ready to ca- to do the call for proposals. Um, the other thing that, and, and thank you, Jessica, for moving forward on that. That's really great to hear. Um, the other thing is, uh, I talked to Robbie Lay- Laycheck, who works with the South Coast Watershed Partnership to include Hubbard Creek in a storm chaser program that he had planned to just use on Elk River and the Sixes. Um, he, he only has resources for two monitoring sites, but I think that could be really helpful for us to identify where silt might be coming into the reservoir. Um, so that you monitor uh, water volume and turbidity before and after large storm events. So he will be doing a test uh, uh, training soon, and we, we will um, round up some volunteers to do that monitoring. And um, I am going to try to find the resource, you know, more volunteers and some resources to um, monitor on that area that um, is, you reach from Vista Drive. There's an easement road that goes, um, it, it, it goes to a place where a lot of mitigation was done on the busman um, logging operation back in the nineties. There was a big slide, and that led to the city having to get water out of Garrison Lake. I noticed that, um, last winter, I noticed that one of those large pipes coming down to the North Fork on the upstream side of the, the road is um, there's water flowing under the pipe. Which I, you know, I'm no um, civil engineer, but it seems like that's something we should be looking into. And I wrote to um, Jackie Firm from DEQ about that, and she is looking to see if that we could get some help from them on that. Um, and at, at the Coalition for Oregon Land Trust, I actually got to carpool with Richard Green, who is the EPA's Source Water Revolving Fund Manager. And he talked about um, that it is often the case that cities are eligible for source water protection funding, but it's just, there's a barrier to, to getting it because of how complicated the process is. So he's going to do a webinar for city administrators sometime in the next month, and I'll um, connect Jessica to that also. Um, and then the other thing is that the Port Orford Watershed Council voted unanimously last night at our meeting to remind the city that recreation access is not recommended for the lands owned by the city. This was made very clear by the managers of other water systems at the conference I attended. And included in the Forest Management Plan should be measures to ensure city-owned watershed land is not used for hunting, bicycling, hiking, ATV use, or any other recreational use. Um, the manager of the Astoria Water System went into that in some detail about why that's so important. It has to do with fire, insulation, all of that sort of thing. So, um, and that is in the City Water Master Plan, but I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you, Linda.
I'm actually working on it, I'm actually working on an ordinance with regards to that too, for water quality protection.
Great. Oh, that's great to hear, Jessica. And then also, we're just, the ongoing work continues to plan for gorge control and pla- tree planting on the Sorensen parcel. And that's, I think, all I have. Thanks for all the hard work you guys are all doing. I really appreciate it.
And thank you, Linda. It's really great that you were able to be a speaker uh, there. So we much appreciate all your effort.
You're welcome. I just want to let you guys know that um, Port Orford is, is kind of becoming renowned on the coast for, for being forward-thinking and wise in your decision to buy that Wilson parcel. There are people from all these other coastal communities who are wanting to know how we did that, and they would like to replicate it. So, you guys have a good reputation on that front.
Good. We want to make every other town jealous. That's why we're here.
Okay.
Hmm, okay, uh, moving on to Port. Uh, oh, sorry, Health, Gary, you have anything to report on the Health?
Uh, got nothing on Health.
Okay. Uh, Tom Cavanes, are you present?
When I saw him this morning, I don't, uh, when you and I were outside at Ocean View, it sounded like he was too, he wasn't able to attend tonight.
Okay, okay, so I, he, Tom is the head of our redevelopment committee for the Port. I was hoping he could do this report just because he's so succinct at it. But I'll go ahead and tell you all that. Okay, okay. So I, he, Tom is the head of our redevelopment committee for the port. I was hoping he could do this report just because he's so succinct at it, but I'll go ahead and tell you all that. Last month, I reported that we had dropped, uh, funding asks for our seawater system, uh, to the E D A. And right after we did that, the Build Back Better funding came out, and, uh, we were hooked up with a coastwide consortium out of Newport, and we're we're going together as a big coastwide package for our project. So that went from just doing the seawater system to doing our buildings and the whole project. And 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 I, I always try to keep, uh, I always try to, I'm usually not at last for words. Uh, I always try to make the point of how important the port is to the city and the revenue that we, you know, that we bring to the town. And this project is going to provide living wage jobs. It's going to provide professional jobs. It's going to change the the whole county, maybe even a large portion of the coast. So these are the kind of things that we need to consider later on when we talk about these things. Because Port Orford is changing one way or another, and 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 we're the ones that are going to kind of dictate the future, and I believe that this port project is it's by far the biggest thing that's happened in Port Orford, I think, as far as an infrastructure thing and maybe in the county. So, uh, so we have a really good feeling about this now. We have some heavy hitters aligned with us to help us along the way, and it's a really, really good news for Port Orford. So we just all need to keep our fingers crossed that that we can keep this traction. We were lucky enough to be in the right place at the right time. We've been working on it for a decade, but all the ducks that we've gotten in a row, they worked out. So now we're moving forward, and hopefully in the next two months, I'll have better reports for you because things are moving very fast and our timeline is very short. So that's my port report.
Steve Lawton. Yeah, Pat, I'm on the, I'm on the port redevelopment committee with Tom.
Perfect, Steve. You can add to that.
Well, I think one of the great things is us joining in this consortium really gives us a much greater chance as a community and as a port to to leverage capacities that these other partners have, who are going to have to deal with everything from accounting and project management, vetting of vendors, uh, you know, equal opportunity employment requirements. So this is really going to let our city leverage other capacities from our partners that we have. And I think it's really going to strengthen our our chance to get all of the funds to build, as you say, not only the saltwater, uh, but the entire project. Um, I think it's going to be phenomenal. And one thing we talked about as a port redevelopment committee, you as a city council, we need to be prepared. This is going to be the largest project in the history of the city of Port Orford, and it is going to change our community. So we need to be ready for a significant impact. Uh, we we have to anticipate it. Thanks.
Yes, and under that line of thinking, um, it's not on the agenda, but I I am going to need to get a letter of support from the city. Um, and it's going to have to be pretty fast. So I'll figure out how to work that out, uh, and and be in touch with you because we need to update all that stuff. Uh, thank you, Steve. Thank you for more succinctly explaining that. I appreciate it. Uh, and so now we'll move on to Greg for parks.
We just had a parks meeting. It got pushed back from last week, so we just had it Tuesday. Um, unfortunately, we didn't get it on here for this meeting. We did approve a new, uh, person for parks. We interviewed him while he was there at the last meeting, um, Clark. Um, so hopefully the next meeting, we'll get him on there and we'll get him for our next parks meeting. Um, we also approved up to seven hundred and fifty dollars to be spent for a camera system for, uh, the visitor center to get the visitor center under surveillance due to the people, we had the binoculars stolen and everything else. So we're just trying to keep it a little more secure, and then that might help out, too, if it's from vandalization of the bathrooms. Um, and we're also looking to update the bike repair station and put it, um, down in the Battle Rock area. So we're going to look in. It seems like a very used area with all the bicyclists. So, um, putting a brand new one in and putting it there, relocating it down. So that's what we did.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, Gary, emergency management?
Um, we met the other night, and, um, since we have limited funds, we're working on an emergency information campaign to where we can start working on, um, training basically everybody in the community as to what they should be thinking about for emergency, personal emergency response. If we can get everybody, every individual um, squared around, then this, then we as a city would have a lot smaller job. We're still researching the idea of having an emergency response board and how that would work, um, and whether it'd be necessary or not, and we're still picking away at the overall emergency community plan. So.
Great. Hopefully, some of this money we have coming in can get, uh, allotted over there and build that fund up, uh, because your work, your will, your work will be worthwhile eventually, Gary. It's just the process that makes it seem like it's forever. So really appreciate all your hard work on that. Alrighty. Counselor Kessler, school district. You're muted there, bud.
High school has ninety-five students there this year. So we're pretty proud and happy about that. Uh, the work on the new, the track surface is started, and they, this week, they were tearing it up. So I don't know how long that project's going to take to finish, uh, but, uh, it's on, it started. So that was, that was good news. And they're starting to form up the new stairs to go down to the track, which are a lot safer and, uh, will be safer in good and bad weather. So that's what's going on at high school.
Great. Thank you, Lauren. That's what we want, is more kids in school.
Yes.
Yeah, if we can grow that number, then we know we're doing something right. Okay, so that's it for the liaison reports. We're going to move into old business, water infrastructure slash state of emergency. Um, Jessica, I don't know if you want to start and then segue into our other visitors. Um, but go ahead.
Okay, yeah, we can start that. So, um, on the, in the agenda, I kind of wrote a timeline of everything that we've gone through. Um, there's a few things that have happened since then, so hopefully I can get to that part and kind of update. Um, but, you know, we all, we had our meetings, the twenty-sixth, and sent the letters out, the twenty-seventh copies of letters are in here. Um, on the thirty-first, myself, John Wade, met with Jason from the R C A C, who's on this, along with Marlon from the Civil West Engineering. Um, and we did a tour of all the different, um, of a few of the different stations, Coast Guard Hill, Hubbard Creek, um, the watershed and a few other places. So I don't know if Jason and Marlon, if you guys kind of want to go in and see what you guys saw, what you guys want to do, what we suggested. I have some of that on here, but I know that you guys can probably put some more color to it.
Yeah, if, um, I'd like to start really quick. Just, Marlon, would you like to go first or would you like me to go first?
Go right ahead, Jason.
So I was just gonna, um, so my name is Jason Carmen. I'm with the Rural Community Assistance Corporation, and we're a, we're a nonprofit, um, and it's based out of West Sacramento that works in the thirteen western states. I'm based out of Veneta, so I'm just right near Eugene. And, um, I was contacted, uh, to to see, we we provide, uh, no-cost, uh, technical assistance to smaller communities. And, um, so so what I'm doing is, um, for for like water and wastewater systems, that's the kind of TA that we provide. And so I'm there to, uh, was was called in to kind of assist with an immediate uh, need and maybe some other future, uh, items. So, um, I'm a water operator and a, um, had been doing this stuff for a long time, and so that's, that's kind of where where we connected. And so, um, I contacted Civil West, and that's how, um, Marlon ended up, uh, meeting because we we figured, uh, since they were the the circuit rider um, at that time, uh, but we just needed to get, uh, someone down there and do a quick look to see what we needed to do immediately. So that's, that's kind of the backstory. Uh, what we saw at Hubbard Creek, uh, so we took, we looked at the, uh, intake was that, uh, that the issues, as they were communicated to us, were, uh, lowering levels in the raw water reservoir. And so, um, we noted that that would be a, uh, probably that the dam at Hubbard Creek was leaking quite a bit, and so that would be our first, uh, order of action to try to keep water in that reservoir so it can be pumped. And then, um, so the immediate, uh, emergency action would be to to seal off that dam. And then I was gonna, uh, um, that was something that was on Marlon's list with with, uh, Civil West. So, um, Marlon, do you have an update with the the proposal for that sealing off that dam?
Um, again, introduce myself. First time having an opportunity to talk with most of you. Marlon Gawker, as Jason mentioned, um, he connected with me. We are the state circuit rider. We also happen to be, um, uh, one of your city engineers. Um, so, uh, jumped at the chance to come down and meet and take a look at at the concerns. Um, and, uh, yes, we we toured a number of facilities and, uh, prepared a scope. Um, and I agree with Jason, there's a lot of challenges in front of you. I think there's a lot of really good information that you already have to help build that path. I've sent over, um, a scope, um, to Jessica, um, to outline how we can help with a a first step in in sealing up the leaking that's associated with the the raw water reservoir there. Um, and, uh, just waiting to to get confirmation of, are we ready to move on that? But I also know there's a lot of other topics that need to be addressed. Um, and, uh, at at some point, maybe that's something that we're going to run through is is kind of a a plan of attack. Jason touched on it earlier about overwhelming. Um, but, uh, looking through the information you guys have, we have a lot of really good information um, that I think can be used to get you guys on the right path and, uh, get you moving forward correctly.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Marlon.
Could I ask one quick question about that, uh, proposal, Marlon?
Yes, sir.
We also have some fish ladder work that we've needed to do for quite some time. Is that part of the repair that's in the proposal? Because it seems like that this would be the time to make those adjustments.
The, what we're looking at in in that specific scope is honestly, emergency response to stabilize your basin. I also know there's some desire to dredge and 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 getting equipment in behind there. I'd be concerned. I don't know the status. I don't really want to go pick and beat on those existing stop logs. They're, they're leaking very poorly. So the recommendation that we have is an emergency repair, um, that would seal that leak and and minimize the water loss that you're currently having through those stop logs and then protect your raw water source. Um, there would have to be, at a future point, a permanent repair because there are those, uh, fish ladder requirements. Um, this would basically stabilize the reservoir so that you have a level of comfort and confidence in your water supply. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, the, uh, in what we saw, as far as the, you know, we we did look at the intake. Um, there were some issues at the treatment plant, and and I can go through those, you know, line by line, but and and Coast Guard pump station. Um, the the biggest thing is the the, um, the raw water reservoir, because, you know, Coast Guard pump station, although it does have some problems that that John has been working on, and and it sounds like there's been a little bit of success at the very least in getting getting it to a somewhat stabilized point for now. Um, the Hubbard Creek intake, um, affects all of your customers. And so um, that one there is the the largest issue. Um, at least that's where I would immediately focus that. And uh, really what we're looking at is is buying time to be able to come up with a better plan. Because, you know, we 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 see the the issues as they sit and and, um, what makes us uncomfortable about the situation and would like to help help you make those decisions. But the the main thing was to to stabilize the source, like that's the, that's the job one. And then that buys us time to get into into maybe a month or, you know, a couple of months where we can figure out how to get a response plan put together to, um, to do this in an orderly fashion, because we we do have a lot of work to do. But I don't think I have enough data to confidently say exactly where to go as the next step besides stabilizing the dam. Uh, other than some other smaller technical things that we talked about and that we saw that day, but that would be the, um, the thing that I would jump on, um, right at this moment in time is that's my advice.
Yeah, and to to just add a little bit to that, I I don't want to dig too deep and get too far into it. We could get way down a rabbit hole here. But I agree, I look at it from, I I try to step back and look at it from a user standpoint. The community and and everybody that lives there needs to know that they have water. Um, so I agree, the reservoir is is paramount. We have to make sure that you have your your raw water source. Uh, the next steps are your redundancy, and I know John's been working hard. We had redundancy issues at the the, um, reservoir there. We had redundancy issues over at the, uh, treatment plant. We have redundancy issues in other locations at booster pump stations. Um, so, and then these are discussed and identified in in some of your planning documents and and prioritized already. So in my opinion, let's stabilize and protect the source so that we know we have access to water. Let's then make sure that we have a level of redundancy and and, um, confidence in our system that it'll operate. And then I think we need to step back and look at where is all of our water going? And and that would be my recommendation because I agree, um, the water meters are, there's a number of communities we've worked with that, uh, they've been very happy with the results. And yeah, there, you may not be losing as much water as as you think you are, because maybe those meters are so old and so worn out, you're not being able to collect on them, and that would be additional revenue for the the community. Um, so I encapsulate it, protect the source, address the redundancy so you have a confident level with your system, and then step towards the other improvements on on sealing the leaks and treatment plant and booster pump stations.
Can I imagine that this, I imagine that this would, uh, involve a rate study of some sort?
That might be something in the, oh, yeah, it might be something in the future, depending on the funding sources that we, um, uh, end up going after, uh, to 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 address some of the longer-term problems. Um, the 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 first thing that that I would need, so, um, the R C A C, I have a a contract. I can work under some, an EPA contract, so I can provide services um, at at no cost to the community. Um, the way, there are some requirements on how I structure the, what we would call a project. And so, um, what I would like to do is, um, uh, and I can do, I can work concurrently without having this stuff in place. I've already made the trip, and I'm already working on 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 things here. If you tell me to go away, I can go away. But the but the main thing that I would like to do is is I would like to put together what we call a community work plan. And it's just a one-page document, and I can get that to Jessica. She's been my point of contact. And, um, uh, w- once I have that, then I can enroll it as a project. I'll keep helping you until we do that. But, um, I just wanted to make sure that you were okay with, um, you know, uh, moving forward with with me as a, um, uh, to provide some of the services to to help, you know, provide some tech support. Uh, it doesn't cost anything for me, but there there, you know, there will be some engineering cost, of course, you know, in the scoping and the and the other things. But my time for you is at no cost to the city. So, um, is there any questions with that or or what would you like to do?
Well, would you, uh, would you feel more comfortable if we made a motion to accept your services or just by consensus? Or are we good?
It it doesn't need to be a, like a city count, it doesn't need to be a council motion. It's it's just mainly if if the, um, I I know I didn't have a lot of time to be able to explain exactly what our organization is and what we do, but but I I do work with a lot of, lot of small utilities and assist them with technical support. I'm not an engineer, but I can assist you in finding engineers and finding funding and with household income surveys and um, and technical operations also. And so, um, so so, yeah, I can, um, and basically, it it would, it would provide me, I can, I can enroll you if the city, if if you were in agreement, just a consensus is really all I'm looking for. And I can get the stuff to Jessica and work that stuff out through her if that works for the council.
Okay, we'll just take a real quick stop there. Uh, I'm going to call for the consensus for moving forward with, uh, with, uh, you stopped talking and I lost his name. I believe it was Mr. Gorman?
Jason Carman, yeah, with R C A C, the Rural Community Assistance Corporation.
I remember the R C A C part, but the name just fell right out of my head as soon as you stopped talking. So, uh, Caroline, are you okay with that? Carolyn, sorry, Carolyn, are you okay?
Yes.
Uh Lauren?
Lauren, yeah.
Tim?
Tim, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yeah.
And James?
I'm okay with it and also very thankful for the assistance.
Absolutely. Is there anything that we can do to help you along the way? Or anything you need from us right now, other than support?
Uh yeah, not not in the in in this exact uh right at the moment. Um I think the main thing is uh to see uh we do have that. What what I would like to see is is getting uh either moving forward or doing something about the engineering proposal on the intake. I think I think that would be the very first thing. And then we can start uh working out some details on how to how to get a uh an engineering document for the other things. I I need to spend some more time there because I've just made one site visit and we were there for, I think, three or four hours. Um I would like to to make another site visit and really dig in with with uh Jessica and John and in, you know, uh get some things figured out as far as uh to increase my knowledge of the system and that that will help immensely.
Great.
One of the other thing, one of the other things that I'll 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 put out there as the city moves forward and and looks at what is the the solution and the pathway. Um like I said earlier, you do have um some very useful documents um with the the current water master plan. If there is a need to to refocus and do a focused planning effort to help establish exactly what the solution should be, there is a program, it's a sustainable infrastructure planning program, um SIP grant. Um it's a twenty thousand dollar planning grant that that can be utilized. And we've we've helped with a number of communities um through that process. And it's a a great resource when you really need to understand and look at options to make sure you're going down that right path. And if if you're interested in that, um that may be a good addition to this process as you guys move forward.
Excellent. And none of us like to do it, but if we hit a spot where we need to do a special meeting for a timeline or anything like that, we're all more than happy to do it, I believe, so.
Okay, and one other thing as as when I enroll you as service as part of the, there's just some paperwork that we do. And part of that paperwork is what's called a TMF assessment. That's a technical managerial and financial assessment. I'm required, if I'm using this, I we can do an assessment um in the beginning of the project and then we do an assessment um at the end of the project. And and the whole point is to try to to increase our score and do better in all of these areas as as the project moves forward. So what you'll get is, I'm gonna sit down with with leadership. Um we'll have to work with Jessica on who that is, but I'm gonna ask a whole bunch of questions. There'll be an interview process and we'll go through everything from technical to a managerial to financial areas. And it'll give you kind of a score and it's a very good document to have too just because it it sort of lines out some of the uh immediate focus areas. Uh and and so these are things to that that is kind of a bonus, but that's that's part of the part of the um package of having us provide assistance to you.
Great. You have any questions?
Oh, good.
Sorry about that, go ahead, Jason.
That's okay, I'm happy to go through all of the uh the fine points, but I I don't know that this is the uh would you like me to go through as far as what I saw on that day just at a at a high level? Uh just so we're all on the same page or I I know that that Jessica put that in the notes. I guess I'd like to kind of know how to proceed.
Okay, you know, I think we have a pretty good uh, pretty good idea of what is going on, but I have no problem with learning a little more. Does anyone else? Okay, yeah, go ahead, Jason and.
Okay, yeah, so so the next thing that we saw, and this is in conversations with John at the intake. This is at Hubbard Creek, uh that there there was a possible electrical issue with pump number one, so there didn't have redundancy there. And I believe, John, that that has been uh repaired, is that correct?
Uh so what we found, Jason, with that is pump one is burned up. Excuse me, um we've uh got with our local pump guy and we've got a remote and mechanical seal on order. Should be here in a couple of weeks and then we'll get our redundancy back.
Okay, okay, all right, so so we're still waiting on redundancy there. Excellent, but I'm glad at least we've we've made a um a little bit of a uh step forward with that. Excellent. And then um and then as far as the PLC programming and that kind of stuff, was that uh there was an issue, there's a possible PLC programming problem with the in auto mode, was that still a thing?
Well, uh so far it's been working for the last couple of weeks. Uh did talk to Tag, reached out to him, what he suggested. They will make us a a clean copy of that program and get it to me in case there's changes or modifications, like you said. So we should have a clean copy here in the next few weeks.
Excellent, excellent. And I know that the the other piece that we I had noted was uh there was a uh you guys had a fairly small dredging limit uh in Hubbard Creek reservoir there. And so Jessica, I know you're working on that, correct?
Yes, and I've had a bunch of conversations with Tyler from the Army Corps of Engineers um at a bunch of times. So I I sent an email, I think, to you, Pat and John, obviously with regards to everything that we need to do. And it's a rather extensive um thing, including some obviously, some things with regards to the fish ladder. Um the ESA um Endangered Species Act, um Habitat Study Compliance. Um uh there's a National Historic Preservation Act that we need to look at too and a few other things also. Um the reason it was put brought down from my conversation with him, from twenty five hundred yards to twenty five yards. Um it looks like there, from what I've been told, that the previous that there was um an amount that was due along with other studies and they did not complete those items. So that is why it was brought down, just kind of like an automatic, okay, fine, this isn't done. This is the only amount that you can be granted. Um but from other letters I've also read that I found, and there was a little bit of miscommunication too. It looks like there was something written about twenty five yards per day, but then all of a sudden it switched to twenty five yards annually. So but there's missing paperwork in between that I can't find, so it's kind of an interesting little scenario. But to get it back going up and running, we're looking at probably about eight to nine months till we're completely certified and ready to go, based upon my conversation with Tyler.
Okay. Great, um so that that was the last thing as far as the intake goes. Does anybody have any questions before we move to the treatment plant? The drinking water treatment plant?
So Jason, a little add on to Jessica's statement there. Um I did reach out to two dredging companies, one's in Washington, one's out of Portland. Um sent them some pictures and gave them some estimates on width and length. You know, we should hear something back for estimated cost dredging.
Um okay.
Yardage again was kind of a guess because of the depth um without going out there and really plunging the bottom and getting some good depth. So um I'm hoping to hear something back shortly and get some sort of an estimate so we know what we're up against.
Okay. Sorry.
I am, well, I shouldn't start talking about the project, but so currently in the dam we have, there is a a a pipe with a broken valve that would help us get a lot of sediment out of the pond. And so obviously we need to go for more dredging, but how can we determine how much reinstituting something like that in our system is gonna help us? Before we set up our, you know, go through the work for the the higher dredging or the cycle of that, uh would that theoretically gain us anything?
Well, it would gain us about two thirds more storage.
Right. That's, no, and I know we have to dredge, I'm just saying for the future, will that that help us? Or can we go for a one time twenty five hundred yards or try to get that way? I shouldn't ask questions like this, I go down the rabbit hole.
It's well, actually the dredging permits are good for ten years.
Okay.
So when we get the twenty five hundred or whatever it is, it's good for ten years. And we can up it if we wanted to at any certain, at any time. But once we go through all these other little holes that we have to, they said that they're good for about ten years, depending on um the level that we do, so between five and ten years. But we're going for, you know, five if we can, ten would be awesome, but the best that we can do right now.
Right, either way, it's a game.
Yeah, I I think what the our thoughts were on this is that this, the dredging would be probably included in this forward plan because we know that the timeline takes so long. So it likely wouldn't be something that we would do. Um we don't think it's as emergency as the, you know, leaking dam issue that we would likely limp through this year and probably through next summer with the same level and then maybe start working the winter time when demands are lower of twenty twenty two. Because just looking at the timelines of doing in water work like that, and it's gonna be a and with the environmental review process, it's gonna take a while. So um we didn't have any um uh emergency, let's get a, you know, dredger in there right now. It is good to have kind of an order of magnitude, John, like you're talking about as far as because we're not gonna know real specific costs, but at the very least you kind of have a placeholder to know somewhat where you're gonna be. But some of this would be, this would be included in um because it would, it's a problem we've identified already that would be in an engineering report uh that we come up with, this is a more longer term thing. Do you have any uh, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, and one of the things too with the dredging is there's only certain months a year that we're allowed to technically do it. Um so it is only in the fall rainy months that we're allowed to do it technically according to the Army Corps of Engineers here, so.
Yeah, I think we got like a three month window or something.
Correct.
I think it's July through November.
Um it's October, November, December for one, and then another one we can do in July, depending on which permit we get.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got you.
That helps a lot, being able to do it in July, I imagine.
Well, I probably read something in there, they prefer you do it in July rather than when the water is really um high turbidity, that it's easier and better for the environment. Because they don't want all that stuff into the stream of um northward down to the ocean, basically.
Yeah.
And if we do it in the winter months too, we have to monitor the turbidity like every day or something like very, very closely for a long time, if I remember correctly.
Right.
Yeah, and this this is something that the engineering report, we're kind of going in the weeds a little bit. It's just that if I had any work to do on my source, I would want to do it in my lowest demand period. And and so even if it takes a little extra work, um I may end up still doing the work just so it's not as critical. Um and and I, so just just something to think about, so.
Makes total sense, yep.
All right, so as far as the, that was the last thing is at the Hubbard intake. I was gonna move to the to the drinking water treatment plant, there was a few um items there and I and John has some updates for some of these. So um there was a non-functional uh finished water pump for the finished water pump station that you were gonna coordinate the change of, how's that going?
Um so I talked to the vendor today and it sounds like we should see it next week sometime. So we just need to find a uh vendor or or contractor that's willing to make those changes because it's all, as you saw, with rigid pipe with no uh makeup room on it. So we just need to find the vendor, uh the pump should be here next week sometime. Um and then we just gotta find somebody that's capable of getting it inserted in. We've got the breaker, we've got the heaters, we're ready to go on that project. And then we'll order order the second replacement pump after we get that pump installed.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and and the main thing that we saw when Marlin and I were there with John and Jessica was that that it was the lack of redundancy in the finished water pump station. Uh you know, the the highest concern was the the, as far as pumping goes, was the lack of redundancy at the source. And then but the next uh the next worst would be the uh the redundancy of the finished water pump station. So uh we figured that would be the next thing, but there was already some work in process. But um it was mainly jumping on that work and getting the pump changed out. And um uh and then uh John had talked about about uh changing it themselves and I was suggesting of getting a contractor to change it because of the complexity of the of the piping that was there. That it's just there's people that do this kind of stuff all the time and they'd be able to get in and out of there and then get the the electrician in to to do the electrical work and get you back to two functional high service pumps was the um something we wanted to get uh going in the next month or so.
John, this is Marlin. Did I CC you on the message? There is a Kuntz machine that we've worked with on a Toledo wa- water treatment plant and they've got a great uh capacity to fabricate in the field. Um did, are you included in that or did I just send that to Jessica?
I don't think I saw that. Forward that to me, that'd be great, I'd reach out and try to schedule something with them.
Yeah, I think you just sent it to me, I can forward it off right now, I have my email open.
That'd be great.
Excellent.
And then, Jason, we still have that uh bypass valve um that we need to attack.
Yeah, that's that's on my list.
Yeah, we need some expertise on that too.
Okay, well, what I think we could do is um we would, because there was also, so back to the finished water pumps, I'll finish with that and then we'll talk about the valves. But the um you were gonna get the new breaker and the overload heaters installed in that MCC bucket. This is some electrical work to support because right now we have a one non-functional high service pump and then we also have one non-functional um bucket or electrical system to run uh the high service pump. So we really only have enough electrical system to run one until the repairs are made to the other piece that would be able to run the the other pump. So these are, right now, the the electric system that runs that to to would run and correct me if I'm wrong, John, would run um pump number two is connected to pump number one and running pump number one. So the the bucket for number one needs repair, but John has the pieces and parts for that.
That's correct, we just gotta get rescheduled down. Um I was kind of waiting until we got pump two installed so we could do that electrical change, get that hooked up, switch over, and then we'd be able to take pump one offline, upgrade the electrical breakers and the heaters and put a new pump in. Um but with that being said, it took almost two, four weeks to get this last pump. So that's four weeks out after we get pump two in service and turned back on.
Yeah, my my recommendation on that one is because the it's a pretty high priority, pretty important pump, I'd have Reese come out uh at the very least and get that bucket ready to roll. Because if the bucket that you have that's feeding the one pump goes out, if something goes wrong with that contractor, you you don't have another one to 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 feed the other pump. So my 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 suggestion would be to at the very least do that end, make sure he doesn't come up with some other problem and then he can be, understand the rest of what's going on and just come and do the splice for you when when the mechanical contractor gets that pump installed. Does that sound like an okay thing to do?
Yeah, that that's a great idea, I'll actually get a hold of Reese tomorrow and see if they can come out in the first week and we'll get the electric portion um taken care of and then we'll be ready to do the switch over. Makes perfect sense, yep.
Okay, excellent. Great, any any questions with the, that that was the last on the the finished water pump uh station. The next thing is on the raw water line that is feeding the filters um or feeding the treatment plant. We've got a, there's a pressure relief valve um on that raw water line that that is non-functional at this moment in time. And that's that that's what you were talking, mentioning earlier, John, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yeah, and and I'd be happy to to come by and and um work on that. Also, you could have the contractor, it's up to you. Um the contractor that's doing the pump is likely, they would be able to 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 deal with the control valve, but I'd be happy to help you with the control valve also. Um that's, it it I am gonna do, I am going to do another site visit. Um it's just in the, it it's not gonna be for a couple of weeks at least. And so whether or not that would be soon enough for you or whether you would like to get a contractor on that.
Um I think I'd kind of wait uh for you to come down in a couple of weeks. We've we've lived this way for a couple of weeks and you're free, so.
Okay. No, I'd be happy to do that, yeah, I I just was trying to be realistic on on my timeframe, it'll be at least two weeks. But I can give you a better better idea when I when I get back. I'm I'm out of town right at the moment on a work, on a trip, work trip, and I haven't um had a chance to sit down at my desk in a couple of days and get some things hammered out.
Right, and and we're fairly competent, it's probably an easy fix once we get the pressure blood off, correct?
I I I think so, unless there's a uh unless there's a pilot problem. But um I think the best thing would be is to to maybe take a look at it, see if we can diagnose what the actual issue is. And then I can, I I can help train you on how to set the thing up and and um the those things. And I'll I'll bring documentation with me, that way you can see how to work on them.
Yeah, that'd be great, because you know, we got a lot of them in the system, so that'd be fantastic.
Yeah. Okay, um that was what we had for, so so basically all my notes I have, I will do the um, I'll come down all but I'll I'll let you know, I'll work with with you, Jessica, on the next site visit on. I'll, but I'll, I'll let you know, I'll work with, with you Jessica on the next site visit on coordination of when I can come down. Uh, the next thing is Coast Guard pump station and that was the one that we needed air plugs in. But then, so, so you were going to coordinate, which I think you already did, is when I look back on the notes that to get pump number two wired up and get it running instead of pump number one and getting it taken offline, that's happened, correct?
Yes, it has. Um, actually went way better than I thought it was. That, uh, pump and motor, after looking at the file, was only a couple of years old. It's, uh, running pretty smooth. We had some, uh, squeal on it the last couple of days. But we, uh, went up there and lubed the, the, the bearings on it and, uh, loosened the bolt and made some adjustments. And it's nice and quiet now, so, um, I feel a lot better. The other one that was shaking and vibrating is now offline. Uh, which is kind of our backup pump, if worst case scenario, I guess, is now our backup pump.
Yeah, because the thing, the, the thing that we need to, to think about with this one, um, it not only provides, uh, uh, domestic water to those zones of, I think it was around 60 homes or in that neighborhood. Uh, but it also provides, um, uh, a fire flow into that area or a, or a low level of fire flow. And so, um, that, that's something that we need to, as far as the prioritization of getting the, um, even though that's not as important as the intake, I think that this one, um, definitely, um, we were one structure fire away from, you know, having a real issue up there. And so I, I think the, we, we would, it would be good to get on this and at the very least get that station functional as it, you know, it's in, in the age that it is, it's got a lot of piping problems. And that, that was where, uh, Marlin, you had, uh, passed some contact information over. Was that the same one that, that you had talked about working at the Finnish water plant? Is that correct?
Yes, for any, any modifications to the existing, uh, piping, I mean, they, he, they do fabrication and, uh, they can, in the field as well as, uh, come out and prep and then, uh, manufacture some of the custom parts and, uh, just get them all installed. That being said, um, the, the skid and the configuration, the piping, um, are you band-aiding it or is there a better solution? Um, because even looking at your fire flows, um, I don't even know even with both pumps, if you'll be able to hit that expectation of 1,500 gallons per minute up there based on what your, your master plan is presenting, so.
So master plan shows a thousand gallons per minute up there. Um, and no, we're not, we're not hitting, there's no way we're hitting it right now because we're on one pump capable of about 270. So, uh, I have reached out to a local vendor here and they're working on a skid that will provide the um, thousand gallons per minute. And I think the, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, but the master plan says for one hour. So that's what they're basing their design off of. Um, with some automation, uh, for if the pump shuts down, no pressure, blah, 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 they'll call our phones. And, um, the other concern is that pump station runs 24/7 and never shuts off. So either we have a, a big leak up there somewhere or lots of multiple leaks. That, that pump station should come up to pressure and shut down.
Actually it won't, just so you know. So I, to, to my, I didn't look at the control systems, so I'm just going to tell you this right now. But typically a station like that will never shut down, no matter what the pressure does, unless it goes super high. Um, but, but most often, the way that that's set up is, is it's going to, um, uh, it's just going to run for, uh, the pump will stay running because at that pump ever, there's no storage up there. There's no pressure storage. So if that pumps, the pumps ever shut off, you can't, you'll, 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 you'll go to low pressure at the top almost immediately. And so that's the, that's the case with that one. If there was a, if they had a pressure tank there, which they don't have, then yes, you are correct. That's the way it would. But to my knowledge, there wasn't and I did not see that.
I'm about 90% sure you're correct with talking with, uh, past employees. I, I'm, I'm fairly certain there's a manifold below that station that just keeps it running all the time.
Yeah, this, this one, yeah, it, it has kind of a weird, um, anyway, the, the, the way that it's set up is just something, the way that they, that they did a lot of stuff in the era that the station was put in. And, and my, I, I'm not, my, my, my biggest thing is to let, I, I wouldn't want to charge down the road not knowing exactly where I'm going with it. I see it falling apart. And so my initial reaction would be to dump a little bit of money to get the, at the very least, the current um, manifolds put together in some way to where we can get a plan together for replace, because that's a longer term thing. And I don't think we have that much time with it. That's my professional opinion with how much it's leaking. And, and I know that, that, uh, John had mentioned, I mean, we were there, there's, there's inner tube rubber that you've got strapped around this thing. And if, um, what, what I would like to see happen is that we, we at least get the manifold put together in some way, even though we know that the pump skid is, is falling apart. We get the manifold put together, we get all the pumps back online and then we can breathe a sigh of relief uh, at, at the very least and plan the gutting of the station someday, you know, and putting, and changing that out to what, what maybe it should be.
And that redundancy is very high on our priority list, right? Cause I know John loses a lot of sleep over that word.
I'm going to look like Pat anytime.
It's easy, it's easy. You want to spend as much time as you're here in the mornings.
And, and the other thing that I see too is this is, this is a safety item also. And I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, with John, I, I wouldn't want to be standing next to those manifolds and doing a lot of work for an extended period of time. And so, um, just because of the way that it, that it, it's leaking in a lot of different places and there's a lot of different cracks. And so I would, um, my opinion is let's make it safe. Um, it's, it's not going to be great, but at the very least, we, we step it one way to get John out of harm, you know, get the employees out of that area. And then, and then also by providing at least, you know, it's not great fire flow, but it's what you've had and at least what was designed originally when the station went in. Um, and then we plan the total replacement. We know that has to happen.
Yeah, Jason's got a good point. I mean, with all the water leaks running over all that, all those pumps, there's a lot of power there. Um, three phase, it's, uh, it's a ticking time bomb when it does go.
Yeah. And, and one of those motors is an open drip proof and those are terrible for, um, they're, they have a lot of open pieces on them. And I, I, that's definitely not a good thing either, so. So yeah, that's my, um, I would get a, um, a contact with a contractor and, and you know, i- i- if you need me to talk to them, if you need, you know, I, I can be a part of those conversations. If you need me to be a part of the conversation with the electrician, I'm a licensed electrician. We can have a conversation about these things too. So just know that, um, I'm a certified, uh, treatment plant operator, certified distribution operator and a licensed maintenance electrician. So we can have those conversations with the mechanical stuff and the electrical stuff if you need me to help. Um, it doesn't need to be the telephone game where I say, hey, you should do this. And then maybe we do a three-way call and you and I and the electrician, you know what I mean? So just keep that in mind if, if you need help with, uh, having that conversation.
Okay. Excellent.
So, so that, that's the end of the things that I had on my list. Is there, is there any questions? Um, my, my, my takeaway from this is I was going to put together a community work plan as far as the things that I would provide. I'm going to get that, that's just something that we do, um, to start a project. I was going to get it to Jessica and then she can get it to, to Mayor Cox and the, and the, and the, um, council. And then, um, basically at that point, I would like to, to begin. We, we, we work towards the emergency stuff. So I would definitely want to see, we've got the scope for the, um, for the dam up at Hubbard Creek to at least get that temporarily, uh, put together. And then, um, some of these other things we can, I can work directly with John on as far as the, you know, the pumping items. And the, um, I'd be happy to provide some behind the scenes, uh, directly with him, uh, technical assistance on that. Does that sound?
Sounds great to me.
Where were you when I was running a water district?
Yeah, I don't know, Marlin. For Jason or Marlin?
Thank you gentlemen for taking so much time with this. Obviously we're very, uh, interested in, in getting these projects done and we'll do anything to help you along the way. Do you have any questions for us?
I, I think at, at this point, look, looking at, at the state of things, my, my question and it is things to think about also is that, um, we're going to need to, to really focus on, um, uh, uh, where we are, how we got here and how we move out of it. And having some kind of community champions and just really helping myself, uh, understand the community and, and just understand the history of where we are is really going to help. Because it, it, I don't like coming in and just the whirling dervish, not knowing, you know, there's always history in every community. And so I, I don't want to come in being insensitive to, to the things that have happened in the past. But I am going to be, I'm going to shoot it pretty straight when it comes to, you know, the way I think it ought to, or at least the way I would like to see it move. So I just want to kind of let everybody know that. And then if there are stories I need to hear, uh, please let me know because it'll help as we, these, we're, we're ultimately going to be in a, in a mode where we're doing a lot more communication um, with the, with your customer, with the customers. And, and that's something that, that helping me understand the customer base and, and their concerns is really going to help. Um, you know, when we talk about the messaging and, and how things, um, you know, find the important things to them. Because we're doing things that I think if, if, if people really knew, you know, maybe where, where we saw some things, I think we could get a, a lot of support for this. But that's just my, you know, I, I'm not in the community. I'm not exactly sure. And that's the information that I need.
Great.
The, the one thing that I would add, I think Jason kind of covered the bases extremely well. I'm really big on, on redundancy and making sure that we have a level of confidence in the system. And because of the level of, of work that needs to be done, um, one of the other simple things that would create an additional redundancy for you, and it would be a very low cost, easy thing to do, would be to potentially take your, your abandoned, uh, emergency source line, um, and, and clean that facility up. Not necessarily install anything, but have that ready and available. If in the event you do have an emergency that comes up, you'd be able to tie into that line which feeds back to your treatment plant and access, um, Garrison Lake. And that would be a relatively simple, easy thing to do. There'd be some flushing and removal of the old, uh, um, pumps that are out there. But everything else could be, uh, blind flanged and valved off and left available in the event of emergency.
Would there be a way of dealing with the snails?
The, the intake, the way that I, I would probably address that is this is an emergency. This is not your, your ongoing everyday use. You'd have a floated intake out towards a, a deeper portion of the water body that would then feed back through a pump into that hard line that already exists. Um, and then you could, you could supplement the water that you're getting, uh, from your primary source because there is some valving. I looked through the master plan. You have the ability to, a T valve with, with, or a T with two valves and, and blend that flow. So if you have issues now or in the future, you'd at least have access to it. Right now, if something was to happen to your primary water source, um, you don't have an immediate place to turn. This would give you a place to turn.
Uh, so, uh, Marlin, as, as you were talking about that, we made some changes during the installation of the contact tank.
Um, okay.
I should have, um, as built for that because there were some lines we abandoned. After me and you and Jason looked at that valve cluster inside the plant, um, it may be that we abandoned that line to Garrison Lake. And I need to verify that to see if it's, if, if it truly was abandoned, but I, I think it may have been.
I think so. Cause just a reminder, even though it's called Garrison Lake, it's a lagoon. And if you look at the report, the clear water is, is right in the middle, down low there's salt and up high there's salt. And we always do run the risk of overtopping on the beach there, which would make it mostly salt. And that's one of the concerns I've had for a while. I wish I could find that report. It was from like 1968 saying it was a lagoon and where the good water was.
Right. Well, there's, there's also talk in there about moving the intake up by, uh, Arizona, uh, bridge to get to better water. Um, I don't know. I saw a report there in, in one of those files about it and we discussed it. But yeah, I, I don't know. That's a, that's a whole, um, it's a hell of a job to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think, oh, go ahead, Marlin.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I, I was just going to say that, um, that that's definitely something to, um, to, that would be looked at, um, absolutely as something that, uh, getting that redundancy in there. And just know that, that right now, as far as your water system, it's, 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 it's in an emergency status. And so technically it's still legal to use as long as the, um, the water, you know, basically to use that, you would, you would notify Oregon Health Authority, your primacy agency, like, hey, I'm, I'm using this. And then when you're done with it, because it's in emergency status. And, um, the thought is, is that, that even though the salt water, uh, you know, salinity is an issue, uh, you could blend it with the other water to bring it down. And just know that there is no maximum contaminant level for, um, um, salt. And so technically it's a, it's a, it's just a, uh, an aesthetic quality. So there isn't a, so i- in an emergency though, that would be something that, that would be, um, probably okay to use. And so that, that's why we were investigating that while we were there. And so, um, and that's something I, I didn't have in my list, just in case because we weren't sure, so.
Understood. Uh, Jan Nelson, caller number seven, we can hear you. We do have it on our list, Pat, to, uh, to proceed as Jason and, uh, to go ahead and knock down that shack, pull all that extra crap out of there, get rid of it, dispose it, blind flange it off. Uh, because it is still viable for an intake, as said, for an emergent, uh, source. Uh, so when we fit that in sometime between now and December, I hope, um, at least get it down to the skid and leave a blind flange there for an emergency connection. Then we can do an exterior, uh, pump skid, um, for an emergency. I think that's a great plan as single point failures, you know, uh, leaving nowhere.
Hey, hey, Jason, uh, one of our local fire departments has a very large military pump. Is that something we could utilize and just hook it into a hydrant that's closed if we had to?
Uh, probably not a hydrant because that's part of the finished water system. And so, um,
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, we, well, that's possible. If the pump was in the right, if it had the correct, uh, configuration as far as the impellers and would make the right flow and head. Um, yeah, there is a possibility of doing that. And, and it's fine to use it on the raw water side. That's, that's definitely something that when we're talking raw water, of course, you know, that's, there's, all bets are off on as far as what comes in. As long as we can treat it in the plant, which that, that's something that, that, um, we have limits on, but we can, I can assist with that.
Understood. I feel like we could be talking about this all night, especially if I keep asking questions. So does anyone else have any questions for these gentlemen? All right. Well, we can't thank you enough, Jason and Marlin. Um, any closing things for us?
I, I think the main thing is, is we'll be in touch. I will get a hold of Jessica and, um, we'll talk about next steps. But the, the main thing is the, I'm going to be planning another site visit to do a deeper dive into data. That's the, the, the two things right now, or that's the main thing right now. And then there's some paperwork to do, but that's not something we have to do right at this exact moment. My main thing is I'll, uh, get the next site visit planned and, um, to where I can assist a little, uh, of more. And then I would definitely recommend that we get the design started on the temporary fix for the, uh, intake, um, dam. And we're, we're, and I, I would like to be able to, to do something that, that was lower cost. But I, my, my recommendation is to, to jump on that and at least get it, get it in the bag so we can get a contractor in there. We're going to have to throw a little bit of money at it. I don't know what the, uh, financials look like as far as emergency cash. And so that's something that, that we can have a conversation about too, but I, um, that would be my recommendation.
Excellent.
I would, I would just add from, from my standpoint, um, just like Jason, I want to be a resource. Civil West is a resource. Um, we're a little bit closer and we're always down your direction. Don't hesitate. If, if something comes up, a question, uh, concern, feel free to reach out, um, and, and, uh, ask. Um, we can be there relatively quickly and, and, uh, hopefully help you move things forward and, and get out of this emergency situation.
Excellent. Thank you, gentlemen. Alrighty. Well, that was a chunk of information that I'm sure we'll be talking about. All righty. Well, that was a chunk of information that I'm sure we'll be talking about for years to come. Now we'll move on to 7B vacation rentals. Obviously, this is an issue. We've been talking about it for a few months.
Just one second, Mayor Cox. I'm I'm I was gonna exit the meeting unless you needed anything else for me at this point. I was gonna follow up with Jessica, probably tomorrow or the next tomorrow or Monday. Do you guys need anything else for me?
No, I don't think we do. I just hope you enjoy the rest of your evening.
Yeah, you too.
Wonderful.
Thanks again.
I will do the same, and I appreciate the opportunity to take part. And like I said, feel free to give me a call if anything comes up.
Awesome. Awesome. It's always good to have life lines.
All right. Thank you all. We'll be talking soon.
Now we move on to big old ugly 7B. Like I said, we've talked about it a few times. I'll throw my two cents out there, and then we will have some discussion. So vacation rentals, I personally have a hard time with businesses in a residential area. I know Portland doesn't have any vacation rentals in their residential area, but that's not necessarily practical. We live in a town of 1,000 people, so I feel like these things that are affecting other cities are proportionately much worse to us. We're in a situation where we have citizens living in hotels and people that aren't citizens in houses. And that's that's a real thing that's going on right now. Yeah, it is a big issue to try to tell people what they need to do with their property. But we're a city. We have zoning, we have ordinances. It's what we do. It's how cities work. So Jessica put us some good information up about Clatsop County. And I think this is the biggest issue we have in front of us right now. Even though we have a water emergency, this is a city emergency, and we're the ones that need to make the decision if Port Orford, if we're trying to build a community here, or if we want it to be a vacation destination. And and I obviously we're here to be fiscally responsible, and it's all about the bottom line. But like we were talking earlier, we want a community. And part of that is having kids in schools. And with the court development and things that are going on in the county, we need workforce housing. And I don't want to take anything away from anybody's property, but I think that vacation rentals are literally hurting the community right now. So I hope that we can come to, I hope we can make a decision to take some kind of action on it or resign ourselves to be a vacation destination and watch our schools get smaller. And maybe I'm being, maybe I'm I'm overthinking it, but I just feel like our community is the most important thing that we need to protect right now. So that's my two cents. So the first question would be, you know, is do we want to move forward? Do we want to regulate this? Or are we going to leave it alone? I personally feel we need to do something.
I want to throw this out there, too. And I know I told you, Pat, earlier, I received a phone call today from a gentleman. I don't he didn't I tried to think he didn't give me his name 100% if I remember correctly, but he was calling, asking about our vacation rental ordinances, laws, regulations, any of those things. And the reason is, is he wanted there's a block, basically, of homes, multiple, I'm saying that he wants to purchase, and turn them to vacation rentals. The end of this conversation came to him saying, asking me, what city is the easiest one and the one that does not have that many regulations? So I'm throwing that out there, just so everyone knows, because to me, that says a lot. And so I just thought you guys should hear that from me, considering I literally just had that conversation today.
Thank you. And one last thing I forgot to say was, obviously, vacation rentals bring money to this town. But I feel like having long term renters in there will will always have money in the town, and it will keep flowing through the town, like we've heard. And like the stats that we've seen, it is an issue. And and it's really hard to capture the monetary value that that we're getting from those vacation rentals. So it's a it's a very sticky subject, but we need to we need to move on it one way or another and and figure out tonight how we're going to do that or not do that. So now's time to start the argument. Gary?
Tim had his hand up, and I'd be like, right after.
Sorry, go ahead, Tim. I couldn't see you.
No, you called on Gary. I'll go after Gary. Go ahead, Gary. Um, I I believe that we need a certain number of vacation rentals. And and I feel like we need to definitely go forward. But I kind of feel like we ought to workshop this. If every counselor came up with their bullet points of items that they could see in an ordinance, to where we had something more tangible, and then maybe we could all, you know, get all of those into the next packet or into just a workshop agenda. And because I can see the definite necessity to regulate a lot of different aspects and and turn them into helping the community instead of taking away from the community.
And under that thinking, Gary, it makes me think that we need some sort of a control date or a deadline, so we don't languish on this. So we're we have a workshop or whatever, but we say by November or December, we're going to have a plan and restrictions will be in place, if that's the way we need to go. Because it's really easy for us with all the emergencies and everything we go on going on right now to to lose sight. And I don't think we can afford to do that. I think we should have this conversation five or 10 years ago, but we didn't. So now we're we're having it now. So.
The time we have tonight, and we could end up spending an hour or two talking about.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I think, I don't know if everybody's prepared. I don't have specific bullet points right now, right? And even next week, midweek, I could see being able to have the time to put that together.
Yeah, and there may be another meeting we'll be having as well. So that that could could tie in. Because so I guess we can go through, it sounds like Gary is amiable to, I mean, I want to, I want to get this done. I want to workshop this. I agree with Gary, but let's let's go around and and make sure we have a consensus on on everybody wanting, you know, to research this and talk about restrictions. Because that's, that's the main thing I want to get to tonight, is to see where we're at, and if we want to pursue this. So we know where Gary's at.
Sorry, someone put something in the chat. So we want to make sure that everyone knows we can't use that. So I see that up there.
We're ignoring it.
Okay. And the perfect other thing, nope. The other thing is a Senate bill. Don't keep keep in mind, too, that there is a bill that was introduced into the Senate in 2019, and they're waiting for a public hearing about having local governments be able to create laws and regulations restricting vacation rentals. So if that happens, you guys, this is becomes a moot point. So just keep that in mind at that point, too.
Okay. Okay, Carolyn, what's your take on this issue? Sorry, Tim, I'll get right to you.
No problem.
Well, I really think that we do need to have some kind of limitations on them. If we've got 49 here, or even 26, that's a lot of vacation rentals for this little town. And you're having a lot of people come through that buying up the property. If we don't put a stop to those things, that's exactly what you're going to have. Everybody wants to make money, and that's who makes money is the property owner, that one doing it. And they can make a lot of money. So I and I really think we need to have the have a check that they have to have a business license and pay the LTL, TLT.
Well, so for no matter what, if they have a business license or not, they are still technically supposed to be paying the TLT tax. But there is no way of us knowing if they are in business or anything if they don't pay the TLT tax. Airbnb and one other company automatically send us the TLT tax. They take it out of the money that is given to them for the rental. So those are a few different things, too.
Well, I just feel that if one if one place has to pay it, then people making money off their homes is like making money off the motel. Because it's not a home, it's a business. Vacation rentals is not a home. It's a business. And we should have a moratorium. We should get a moratorium on them right now, soon as possible, where they can't make anymore, until we can get this all sorted out.
And that would be a process. To do that, I'm not saying we can't do that. But from talking with Shayla last meeting, it is a process.
It is a process, but it's a much shorter process than implementing a land use, a new land use code in reference to BRDs. I mean, a moratorium you could put in place in 60 days. It's going to take you longer than that to hash out what you want in your BRD code. Because your BRD code is going to have to go to hearing, and the planning commission's going to review it, and et cetera, et cetera.
Is there any way that we can put that on the map, Shayla? Like, we are going to have some restrictions in 60 days. So if you currently have a vacation rental, you will want to get your business license in so that we know you're a vacation rental? Or is there any way we can get a list? Or is there any way we can get all the vacation rentals on the map by by saying that we will possibly implement restrictions? I guess that's kind of a silly question at this point, until we decide what we're going to do. But.
Yeah, I mean, and there are lots of ways to make sure that your vacation rentals comply. I mean, I can think of jurisdiction where every single vacation rental is a conditional use permit. Every single vacation rental had to go before the planning commission and be approved. There are also clauses you can put to where you cannot build a dwelling and turn it into a vacation rental. You have to it has to be an established dwelling. It has to be there for a certain amount of time before you can apply to be a vacation rental. So that sort of cuts down on folks building BRDs. They have to build houses.
Yeah, that's the angle that Clatsop County is going to take is make it so hard that people have to be very serious if they want a vacation rental. Yeah.
Right. It has to be it has to be a house for a certain amount of time, and then you can apply to be a vacation rental. But because you have to go through the conditional use permit, vacation rental is not promised to anyone, because those are subjected to approval by the planning commission.
Gotcha. So we got two out of the five. So that's the kind of information we're going to want at the workshop. James, I'm gonna call on you after Tim, because you're looking sad and tired there, buddy. Tim, go ahead. It was just a joke.
It sounds like Shayla had really good information, and maybe that's the route we need to take. That that is the more official route, and that pretty much sums it up.
Right.
You know, a lot of people think I'm I'm pro vacation rentals. I'm I'm actually on the fence about this whole thing. I could see the pros and the cons of it, but I see more cons than pros currently. There are some things I see on some of these papers I don't care for. I don't like to see any kind of a business, if that's what we're going to call this, a business, because that's what it is. It makes money, whether it's in residential or commercial. But I don't like that we're going to single out just a vacation rental for three complaints and pull their business license. Why wouldn't we do that for our, you know, a restaurant? Or I don't like the idea of having a a building inspector come into a vacation rental. Why wouldn't we do that for a family? Wouldn't it be more important to do do that for a long term family than a vacation rental? That's why I have some problems with some of the things I see here on paper. So yes, I'm willing to work on it. A workshop sounds great. I think we can get there. But some of these things, they're going to create more problems than they're going to fix.
Right. And that's why we workshop. I mean, we're obviously a unique community, and there's a lot of bullets that we can put in our gun to do this. And and I know I did the same thing, Tim, where where we get stuck on things like that, you know, because that is that is a pretty hard, hard rule. So we have a lot of discussion. Shayla?
Another thing you can do is make it so that when a dwelling transfers hands, that the conditional use permit for a vacation rental goes away, and the new owner has to reapply. And a lot of places have put limits on how many vacation rentals, you know, can jump on board. If you transfer the property, you could fall down to 10th on the list. Then have to wait. So I mean, there's a lot of creativity that goes into writing one of these codes.
Could could we not? Could so so could we? I don't even know if we could, Shayla, but I mean, could we declare an emergency and put a stop to vacation homes right now till we sort it out for the next 60 days?
Oh, yeah, you can put a moratorium in place. North Bend just did.
So could we do that tonight?
Can't do it tonight. But I mean, you could hold a special meeting and do it. It does require a hearing, but it it's a condensed process. The law has it, and you you have to have a workout plan. I mean, you have to say, okay, we're gonna we're gonna develop a code to address the vacation rentals. We're gonna do so within eight months or something. I mean, you have to have a workout plan to end your moratorium.
Okay. And I know that's an ugly word, but it is a good option to stop this until we have it hammered out. James, you're next.
Okay, so I'm pretty sure everybody knows my stance. But instead of just saying no, I've got a good list of reasons, and I have an alternative that might serve the community better. I'm going to start with my alternative, and I'm going to give you my list of reasons for why I'm against any of these limitations. So the alternatives are, we could benefit as a community by utilizing the income that vacation rentals do offer. Unlike long term rentals that offer very little income and are also frequently owned by people who do not live in the community, as a lot of cases, they have moved away. Vacation rentals bring in money not only to the owner, but to local businesses, all sorts of businesses. As Colleen Easlon said earlier in the meeting, it is a proven fact that most people who travel eat out, buy things at grocery stores, et cetera. You don't pack your food all the way across the United States. You buy things as you go. The amount of containers and stuff that go out in vacation rental trash do prove the fact that they utilize local services. My my hopes for alternatives would be to make it so that the city can benefit. For one, the city benefits from the fact that the property values go up. Vacation rentals are generally heavily invested into, so therefore property value goes up. That means our taxes go up. If we're gonna consider, if we're gonna, what?
Our taxes, too.
Oh. But yeah, I'm just saying, property tax goes up, you know, and.
But James, that's the problem we're having. The houses, the housing costs are going up so much that regular families can't afford to buy houses. Yes.
Right, Lauren.
I'm sorry.
No, I I apologize, James. I started that. And James, it's James's time. So we got plenty of time for arguing at the workshop. But I apologize, James. Go ahead.
Okay. And so what I would hope to do would be to implement a specific business license for vacation rentals. So we'd have a yearly fee for the vacation rental, you know, say $500 every year. And so that would provide the city with some income. They would have to, of course, be paying their TLT tax, which they should be paying anyway. And then we should be giving them a commercial rate on water usage. They should also be given their own category for billing and tracking purposes, so that we can properly determine usage rates and quantities, as they are not, right now, they're lumped in with the residential tracking, and so we can't really see the difference, you know. But there's no reason why they shouldn't be paying commercial rates, you know. And so that's another benefit to the city. We could be using that extra income to actually be building our infrastructure back up. If we go about producing a whole bunch of water and we don't actually sell it, then we're actually taking a loss. So think of it as a business and whatnot, when we're not having a water shortage, you know, then then, you know, we could go places with this. So that's my that's my hope for an alternative. For for going against limiting and whatnot. For one, I'd like to mention the fact that the average age of a For, for going against limiting and whatnot. For one, I'd like to mention the fact that the average age of a homeowner, a first-time home buyer, has been steadily going up every year. And this was before vacation rentals became a thing. It still continues to go up. The cost of properties continue to go up. The fact that people cannot afford to buy a home has nothing to do with the vacation rental industry. It had already been happening. At this point, maybe it is exasperating things, but that situation was already out of control. So, so buying, buying of properties, that's, that's already a problem. It's getting to the point where it's actually more cost-effective to build than it is to buy. The problem is, is people don't have the finances for that. And that's a whole big spiral. So I don't want to go too far down that one. Constitutionally, people are given specific rights to their property. And that anytime you take a right away from a property, it's, it's as if you are condemning and taking the property. There's some really good articles on the internet about that and about courts, you know, supporting such things. And I just want to read this one thing here. It says, the constitution protects property rights through the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment due process clauses and more directly through the Fifth Amendment's taking clause, which goes into a bunch of other stuff and whatnot, but it basically comes down to people have the right to do what they want with their property, short of hurting their neighbors. Directly. They are not, specifically not responsible to do anything with their property to benefit their community. It is not their responsibility. And if we force that on them, we are taking their rights to their property. And as, as Shayla will tell you, there is due process for going through all this. So there is, you know, the legal ability to do it, but that doesn't make it right. Having the ability to do so never makes something right. Let's see, and I think I have one more thing here. Yes, I specifically object to the idea of having conditional use permits for vacation rentals because of the fact that you've got a group of people abstractly deciding whether one person or another can have a vacation rental. Instead, it needs to be a more direct criteria. So if we are going to end up with a permit process, there had better be simply a checklist. And the group that's deciding just says, yep, you're all checked off, you're good, or nope, you need to get these things checked off in order to qualify. So. Oh, lastly, we're going to define vacation rentals as businesses, then we should also define long-term rentals as businesses because they exist solely for the income of the owner, no other purpose. Just like a vacation rental. The only difference is instead of having a interchange of customers, the customer is one family for a period of time. So same criteria, just different time periods. So my, my thing is no.
Okay. So, so well, well, you still got a chance, James. We've got two people to talk, so that could be a tie. And we'll go next to Lauren.
I've been reading up on this because I've been talking to many, many people since I moved to this town about the cost of housing rising at a precipitous rate by people buying up properties and using them specifically for vacation rentals. And yes, James is absolutely correct. That does bring up the price of houses. That's wonderful if you can afford to live in this community and buy that house. That's why most people in this community are not buying houses because they can no longer afford it with the jobs that are provided here. So the issue here is we're pricing, it's wonderful for all the homeowners who want to sell houses. Most of the houses being bought here are being bought by people from out of town. A lot of them are not planning to live here. They're planning on doing a vacation rental. As the articles say, we are a go-to place. So it's, it's a good bet that you're going to make money on a vacation rental. But the pressure it puts on our system, especially now with our water, most of these places do not cater to a single family. It's a whole family. We're talking about sometimes six, eight, seven, nine, 10 people. And, and looking at the water bills, I, I, you know, it's got to be higher than the regular people when they're there for three or four days. Think about yourself when you go to someplace on a vacation, you stay in a hotel. I know you probably take longer showers and use more water than you do when you are home. It's just natural sense. It's not my water. I'm not paying for it. Okay? These issues become effect, it causes problems because we have no long-term places for people to live for, that are rentals. We really just don't in this town. There are no rental facilities for homes in this town, except for vacation rentals. In fact, it's so insidious that I can tell you that my wife hired two people to work at, and it's not just Port Orford. Two people that hired because she's trying, trying to create a team at Southern Coos Hospital. They came in, in the wintertime when there's nobody here. Both of them were kicked out of their, given their 30-day notice and one guy said, have I not paid the rent? What is it? The guy actually said to him to his face, no, I can start doing vacation rentals now it's season. And I can make as much money as you've given me in six months in less than, in less than a month. I mean, that's the situation we're in. As, as for people buying food, I have talked to people at vacation rentals. Most of them buy their food before they get to the coast because they could, they know the food on the coast is more expensive. Now, I'm not saying they don't go out to eat once or twice while they're here. But most of the, that's why they need, want a kitchen so they can cook. They're not going to bring home goods from a restaurant and eat it. So I understand that, that, that what you're saying, and I'm not talking against you, I'm just talking, I've talked to people at some of the vacation rentals who are here. The other thing is cars. They've been cars here. Now, what happens? You know, Joe and Mary, they can leave at two o'clock on Friday afternoon from Portland. Sally and Jim can't, have to leave, can't leave till four o'clock. And then another family can't leave till five o'clock in the evening. Okay? So they all, they, each family drives a car. Now we've got all these cars sitting and where do they usually park? On the street. So there's all these things that go on. There's water, there's this, there's that. But the biggest issue is we do not have affordable homes for people to buy or to rent. And consequently, my wife with two good team members, because they had no place to go, she lost these people that she had been grooming as part of a medical team. And they left town. They left this area. Okay? So it, it's not, it's, it's, it goes on and on and on. These vacation rental homes, especially in residential areas, are not homes. And as for, and, and as, as for your Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments, I knew somebody was going to bring that up. The opinion you're getting, it's only an opinion. It's not the actual ruling of the law, just like the Second Amendment, how we are changing it and stretching it to do all these other things. That, that Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment, that is what you're stating about you cannot do something to somebody's home. Okay? You can if it's not good for the community. In other words, what you're saying, if I go by this, is I could start a bordello in a nice neighborhood. And you can't do anything to me. I'm not bothering you. I'm just having, I just have a bordello in your neighborhood. Okay? And that's the situation we're talking about. You cannot do that. All right. So I guess you know my opinion. I think we need to have some kind of control.
Okay. So you're for the workshop then?
Yes.
I just had about a thousand things that I shouldn't say. I'm glad we got through that after you started. All right. So that leaves us with Greg. What is your opinion on workshopping this, sir?
Yes to the workshop? Let's move forward, please. I don't need to say much else. I, I, we can all say at the workshop. I, I think it's something we need to be done. It's been up and down the coast. It's a problem. It's a current problem here, current, something needs to be addressed here in the city. So workshop, yes.
Okay. And then one last piece, because you made me think of it, Lauren. I know every restaurant and most of the businesses in town literally have lost employees because they had nowhere to live. Griffs, the reason they have a split shift and, and you know, is because they don't have enough employees, employees for their two restaurants and I know of at least two of them that were good employees that had to leave because they just couldn't find a house. So.
Couldn't find a, couldn't afford, yeah.
But you know, everybody has good points and that's why we're workshopping it. And with all the options we have, I'm confident that we can come to a resolution that at least 50% of the people are happy with. So the big question now is Shayla, do you have any availability for a meeting next week?
Tim's got his hand up too, Pat.
I can't see it. Go ahead, Tim.
The only thing I forgot to mention before, why Shayla's doing her research is you, you know, I want everyone here to be aware. I can see that people are passionate on both sides, but you really do need to be aware there are some misstatements being stated. I had a vacation home up until recently. Mr. Burns had a vacation home until just recently. James Garrett was in the industry. Colleen Eastland is in the industry. These people do eat out. Trust me. I don't, I, I can tell you for a fact, they eat out. So not every one of these people are bringing their groceries in because even in our little home, we had people come from long, long distances away. And like James pointed out, they're not bringing their home from another, or their food from another state. So there are some, you know, as it always is when we get on a contentious subject, we all lean one way or the other. But our biggest problem, why there aren't rentals for people in Port Orford, and trust me, you're never going to stop the house prices from going up. That will adjust itself when we go into the next recession. This is not going to stop that. But our biggest obstacle is Oregon landlord tenant law. People don't want to rent their homes to people because some people are unrentable. There you have it.
Thank you, Tim.
Yeah. Could I, could I add to that real quick?
Certainly, James.
That is one of the major problems, which as many people know, that was, that was one of the final straws for me closing down the business that I was running, doing the property management. And whatnot. When, when, you know, COVID came around and whatnot, and that combined with the fact that people, the owners just did not want to rent anymore and we were fighting to hold on to every rental that we could. You know, it's, it's, it is a big problem. So we're going to be taking options away. And, and a lot of these homes that are rented, they are too high dollar to be rented as long-term homes. No one can afford the, the long-term rental rate that people are going to want. Nobody's going to be paying $3,200 a month, which is what they're going to want for some of these homes. And, and they're worth it because they are super nice. You know, and they're big. So you know, it, it's, I, I don't think that this is going to solve the problem quite the way everybody's hoping. It may have some effect and whatnot. I, I think really what we need is we need a developer to come in and put in a set of apartments. Like, you know, a decent set of apartments. That's really what we need. You know, unfortunately, our water system is not conducive to that. And so really when we come down to it, our, our whole housing crisis really comes down to the lack of development due to our water system. Which we all lament the fact that our, you know, previous thing didn't pass through and get our water system fixed. But you know, I feel like that is the better way to go. Get the water system fixed and then, and then the town can, can maybe repair itself. But Tim's right. The, the next recession will definitely help with our housing crisis because we've had one for a long time. It's just suddenly worse now than it was before. You know, so.
Alrighty. Thank you, James. Shayla, did you come up with any possibilities?
So my schedule the next couple of weeks is incredibly ugly with hearings and whatnot and meetings. I can do the evening of October 6. That may be not as close as you would like, but that's what I've got.
Well, I mean, we still need to have a conversation about this. Maybe we can come up with something in a workshop next week and then just have you bet some of the, you know, I mean, it's going to be a continuing conversation until next month. So.
That's fine.
So I think we should go ahead and have the workshop because we have some other stuff to do.
And I can give you an example of what, what North Bend did. I'll just email it to you.
Yeah, any starting point we have, because, because I don't want to say we're working on opinions a lot, but there's a lot of different angles on this. So the more facts we can get, the better. And it sounds like if everybody could find a vacation rental and go through their garbage this week at some point before a meeting, then we can get that. Sorry, sorry, sorry. So are we going to stick with Thursday for our meetings? Or is, is everybody available next Thursday at 5:30 or 4:30 or? That's our question now.
Thursday at 4:30 sounds good.
Everybody good with that?
4:30 sounds good.
Okay. Okay. James, what do you got?
It, it, it does, later is better for me. I, I like the 5:30. That really does work better for my, my schedule and whatnot, which I know world does not revolve around me, but we did decide to do our council meetings at 5:30. So if we can do the workshop at 5:30, keep it consistent. I'd appreciate it, but you know, whatever works for everybody.
No, I always like to get a full day in too, so I'm, I'm fine with it. Uh, Tim, is 5:30 okay with you?
Sounds fine.
Everybody okay with 5:30? I'm sure it'll only take us three or four hours, so no big deal.
Well, we can do multiple workshops, you know, I think that'd be better to do multiple workshops because I bet you we're going, what we're going to do is we're going to end up kind of in the first one, kind of creating some form of roadmap, maybe.
Right.
That would be, that'd be my suggestion would be like, you know, a bullet point list of all our different options and then, and then do a bunch of different sessions considering each option and how to implement it and the effects it's going to have until we figure out which ones we want, which ones we don't. And then a final one to compile it all together. So I really don't see this all coming together in one workshop.
No. So I would like to get determined in the next workshop is if we're going to move ahead with the moratorium for a stopgap until we, you know, until we come up with all those things or if we're going to wait. So keep that in your mind because that's going to be the big thing is if we're going to do the moratorium, we need to start that process and not really shutting anything down, just, you know, stopping the blood flow while we determine where we're going to go for the next couple of months. So. So Jessica, it sounds like we have a meeting at 5:30 next Thursday?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah. And obviously this is going to be a hard conversation, but take solace in the fact that if we make the wrong decision, we won't get reelected and we won't have to worry about it in the future. We always have that. Uh, moving on to new business. 8A, approval of the job description for utility accountant clerk receptionist. Does everyone have a chance to look over that? And if so, I would, I would like the motion so we can start the conversation. James, what do you got?
Um, I just wanted to point out that sometimes with union contracts, because this is a union position, isn't it?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Okay. That, that sometimes unions have problems with the, the statement of other duties as assigned. And so I want to make sure that that's not going to become a big hangup or whatnot.
I sent that to their union, to their union person and I have not heard back and I told him I needed to hear by today.
Okay. So.
Just letting you know he's low there.
We're just going to stop that right now until we hear from the union. Unless Shayla says we have to do it right now.
I don't say you have to do it right now. I just thought that Patty was also the planning clerk.
So, that's the problem that we're running into and this is a conversation I've had with Pat a few times. Um, there is way too much on that plate for her to be able to do the, she's also the planning clerk, she's also the court clerk, she's also the utilities clerk, she's also the receptionist, there's multiple things. So, we have started to pull some of those things away from her and moving those to other things, and that included part of the planning. I contacted and talked to someone today with regards to that, and that's something that we can talk about.
There will be a planning clerk of some kind?
Yeah, so some kind in place by the time we get there.
Okay, so maybe we should just, uh, look over what we have, we'll hear back from the union, uh, if we need to put that on the workshop. Well, it won't be, it'll be a workshop, not a special session, so we might have to wait till.
Well, that's my, that's kind of the, the double-edged sword, because I would like to post this as soon as possible, because obviously, as you guys all know, finding someone is gonna be a real tricky situation.
I don't see the harm in approving it.
We'll have a special session instead of a workshop so that we can, uh, so that we can make a motion on that if we have to. We'll wait for the union to get back to us. We'll all look over what we have so far and then.
Tim's got his hand up.
We can pull the trigger on. Uh, Tim, who, did you say Tim has his hand up?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tim.
So, so there's a few things I see missing on this, um. So, I would like to see the hours per week this person's supposed to work.
Okay.
And their work hours, like if they start at seven-thirty to four-thirty, whatever they may be. And I would like to, um, see the days in office, Monday, I guess it's a Monday through Friday. I would like to see that in this description.
Okay.
So it's clear, uh, that this is, uh, you know, this person works in the office, these are their hours and that kinda stuff, and I'm sure the union's gonna want that too.
Shayla, we can do a special session instead of a workshop so we can do some business correction.
Yeah, you can.
We just have to make sure and post it as a special session.
Is there anything on the pay on this? No, I'm sorry.
No, there is. The pay, the salary, no, there isn't on this, but on the posting, there will be, the pay will be listed on there. This is solely the job description, there's nothing to do with the pay, because obviously Patty has been there for a long time, so the rate of pay for her is more than this job as a newcomer coming in is going to be.
Technically, you don't even need to put a, a payday, a payday on it.
I was just asking, I didn't know.
No.
Looking at job.
Um, I, I think, I think we could go ahead and approve this more or less with, with the proposed changes, just so she can get this posted. Um, and, and whatnot, I don't, just because we post it doesn't mean we can't make any changes before we hire, right?
Well, we haven't heard back from the union yet though, James.
The union has also have not gone back to me on multiple things. This is not the only thing. I mean, I've been waiting almost a month. Well, actually probably longer for other things to be done and or assigned, and I have not heard back, and I've been hounding and hounding and hounding, so.
I don't know, guys, it's up to you, but.
It, it seems like to me that if we posted it, if, if we posted it and people applied and then we, we heard back from the union and they're like, we don't like that phrase, that there'd be no problem in striking that out. Somebody who applied and then had other assigned to duties removed, isn't gonna consider that a major change to the position they've applied to. Um, and whatnot, so I honestly don't see, I, I don't see a problem in advertising this position and with hiring in Port Orford. Uh, the sooner we advertise, the better, because we're gonna need some time.
Absolutely.
Tim had his hand up.
Go ahead, Tim.
I, I, you know, I, I think we need to get it out as soon as possible, but, um, right here in the back of my mind, I remember multiple meetings under this union contract, and I would hate to run into some kind of a glitch with the union that causes us any kinda grief.
Do you have any ideas, Shayla?
How long have they had to review it?
Um, they've had a little over a week and a half, almost two weeks.
Well, I mean, you can probably amend it. It, it's not like you're gonna be hiring for this position in the next thirty days, probably. I mean, it's gonna take a while to find this person. But you might wanna put on it that it is a full-time position, which is considered, whatever how many hours a week you consider that, thirty-six or forty.
Yeah. So, should we, um, do we need a motion for this?
Yeah, we need a motion and then we can do the cha-, you know, then we could, well. Yeah. We can either do that, James, or we can do the rest of our corrections and then make the motion to accept it with corrections or undo the motion and accept it with corrections, however you want to do it. Yeah, a motion would make it cleaner though, so, yeah.
Okay, yeah, well, and for corrections so far, I've got, you know, um, uh, days and times of work.
Yes, and full-time position.
And that it's a full-time position. Uh, anything else that we wanted to correct on that?
The description looks good to me, um, and it says, uh, you know, that it says it's, uh, you're working in a home type, uh, environment, they could look up. I mean, I think it covers all the basic stuff.
Yeah, I thought, I thought so too. So, okay, well then, um, I will move that we accept the proposed job description with the amendments of adding the day and time for the work and that it is a full-time position.
All right, first to second. Jessica, for some reason, it sounds like Darth Vader's in your room.
I know.
All right. Uh, well, I don't know if we need much discussion on that, because we just did. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Carolyn?
Yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Tim?
Tim, yes.
And Greg? All right. Thank you, James, for pushing this around. It's always nice to get as much business done as we can. Okay, so we got that out of the way. Eight B, right-of-way usage permit approval. And just to throw this out there, I'm pretty sure that that was rocked before and it just had grass and dirt grow up through it, so, just throwing that out there.
Uh, yeah, and I, I do believe it falls under just the general normal kind of thing that you have alongside of a road anyway, so I mean, to me, that's, that's not changing anything, that's just regular maintenance. Um, I really don't see why we should have any problems with it at all whatsoever, and they're not excavating, because they're only taking, you know, a few inches of, of dirt off the top, so there's no risk to our water system or anything like that, so. Uh, uh, I would move that we approve the right-of-way usage permit for Maude Swannstrom.
I was second to that.
That's what I like. Any discussion?
No.
Falls under maintenance?
Alrighty. Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Great.
Greg, yes.
And Tim?
Tim, yes.
I don't know why I wanna keep voting so much tonight, I've never had, oh, Gary.
Gary, yes.
Gary, yes, okay. I wanted to make a motion earlier too, I gotta, I don't know what I'm thinking tonight. Okay, so that wraps up the old and the new business. We move on to considerations. Do we have any citizen considerations?
Yes, please.
All right, please state your name and let us know your concern.
My name is Connie Hunter and I serve as, uh, serve veterans on the Curry County Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council. And Army veteran Gordon Clay, our founding director emeritus, couldn't make it tonight, so please accept our council's apology for this inconvenience and we ask for an opportunity to reschedule. Um, in addition to that, uh, we really appreciate comments, uh, tonight from Jason Carmen for expressing your sensitivities for what has happened in the past. As you know, September is Suicide Prevention Month. We can't talk about veteran suicide prevention without recognition being given to US Navy veteran Mayor Jim Auburn, who in two thousand and thirteen chaired the panel for the Veteran Suicide Awareness Town Hall, which provided a call to action for Curry County on behalf of our veterans. At the end of that meeting, veteran Gordon Clay stayed to speak with me and reminded me that Curry County had unsettling high per capita numbers, also among our seniors and youth. We have never stopped working together and Gordon's leadership brought us to where we are today. And in fact, before eight o'clock this morning, he was sending me an email to remind me that we had our eight AM Roseburg and Southern Oregon VA Mental Health Summit and not to forget. So he beat me to the punch on that one. Um, but we have done a lot this year at the council level and Gordon's leadership has brought us to where we are today. Uh, just a note on our Veterans Task Group, which I facilitate and liaise with our council, is actively seeking people who are interested in training for community health workers, peer support specialists, and oral injury group support on behalf of veterans. Please contact me at connie.hunter@outlook.com for more information and thank you for your special consideration tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. It's very important what you do for our communities. Okay, citizens' concerns. Looks like Mr. Lawton has his hand up. Go ahead, Steve.
Good news. I want to let the council know that with the hard effort of a bunch of volunteers, we completed the Fort Point Trail two days ago, so we're excited about that. We're waiting for a pending Luba appeal. Uh, and once that, uh, gets resolved, we'll be able to sign it and identify it and notify the public that we have access to it. And please note, while we talk about vacation rentals, the Luba appeal is by a corporation that has, uh, four units in the city of Port Orford and is trying to restrict the public from public right-of-way. So, uh, they're not exactly always residents. Second point is I'd like to clarify and go back to the same information that I tried to tell at the very beginning. Let's not use anecdotal evidence, let's do some good, hard research. That's what you make good decisions on. There's a lot of good, hard data out there that tells you about vacation rentals. I gave you a very good link uh, by thirty-three cities who supported that research that shows you the problem that impacts the supply and demand of housing due to vacation rentals. The last point I'd like to make is I'm very concerned you're even thinking about using Garrison Lake as an emergency backup. Uh, that is a lagoon. Uh, I don't know how it happened, but you allow people on the north side to have city water, but they have septic systems. I surely hope that if you think about that lagoon, that you require all of those people to hook up to city sewer as well, so that we don't have leaking septic systems in an emergency follow-up. One last point that I'd like to raise is that, uh, if I can get it here, I talked to a colleague and, um, I was quite concerned about, uh, our, our situation with the fish passage, and this is a person who works with the Klamath River and is a scientist in OSU. And I, I was explaining to them our dilemma with water and the comment they made, they sent me an email, I'm not allowed to give you their name, they said, "If the dam interferes with salmon and steelhead recovery and has a non-functional fish passage, it could be at risk under the ESA." If the city must install an active fish passage, then Hubbard Creek Drainage is capable of supplying enough water for salmon and steelhead recovery and still keep the reservoir at a functional level for your municipal water supply. So I do think we better think long and hard about our water supply and the health and vitality of our community, because this is a serious problem we're seeing all over the West. It's impacting Arizona farmers, it's impacting ranchers in the Klamath Basin, and we could wake up with a really big problem if we're not careful as a community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Uh, regardless of how we go with these things, we all appreciate the information you provide us.
Yep.
And, and very much thank you once again, and I'm sure we'll do it a hundred more times, but for your effort with the Fort Point Trail, it's gonna be a great thing for the city once we get it hammered out, so thank you very much. All right, what other citizen concerns do we have this evening?
Uh, we've got Ron raising his hand.
Go ahead, Ron.
You're, you're muted, Ron.
I, I'd like to talk about police and government accountability.
Go ahead.
Uh, at this point, I turned in a complaint about one of the local officers five months ago. And the complaint form that I was pushed to turn in by Chief Hobart, uh, had a thirty-day timeframe on it and it was said to go to the city lawyer, the city administrator, uh, the mayor and the police chief. I got an answer back that the form was accepted, but that's also a contract that was to me met within the timeframe set by the city. And there's been no answers since, so I'd like to discuss on how the city's going to change, uh, how they handle police accountability. As well as when I went to make the complaint originally, there is nothing posted within City Hall like there's supposed to be in order to make that complaint. Also, no officer was willing to take it, it was said to have to be in writing, which that's also not the case. If anybody had input to this.
Jessica, you want this one or me? Well, we really don't, we really, under citizens' concerns, Ron, we are not supposed to have an interaction, but we hear what you're saying as a council and I know we're working on it. I know that we've had, uh, correspondence with Jessica. Uh, I hear what you say about the timeline, obviously it's past that timeline. Uh, and hopefully we can get a meeting going that we've been working on. Um, but like I say, we can't interact that much, and I'm not trying to stymie you whatsoever. Um, but it's just not the process, so I will do my best to coordinate that next week and, and push, push everyone we need to, to make that happen, and that's the best I can do right now.
That would be appreciated. And not an, an interaction, but the not having stuff posted in City Hall i- is something that does need to be changed and addressed. Uh, this should be an easier process when there's a complaint necessary to be made about a police officer. It shouldn't be made that uncomfortable to make the complaint by there being no availability for the process to be made and having to look up everything yourself. So if that could be worked on in the future, that would be appreciated.
I think that we can do that. Thank you. That's low-hanging fruit, that's an easy fix, so. I'm not trying to diminish your position here, but like I say, we have to, under citizens' considerations, we don't really interact, but we will be in touch. And thank you for coming. Thank you for putting us on notice with this.
Thank you.
All right. Who else do we have? All right, staff concerns. Do we have any staff concerns?
I don't think so that I know of. I mean, you guys all know, we've been kinda busy handling a million, a million things going on at the same time, so I think we're, we're, we're good. I don't think John does either, but I can't speak for him. I think he's, I don't know if he's still on.
I wouldn't be if I was him.
I'm here, it's all good. You got it? Okay, you're good to go, John. Uh, councilors.
No, sir, I'm ready for, uh, next week's meeting.
Next week's meeting, Thursday at five-thirty?
Uh, Tim's got his hand up.
Go ahead, Tim.
Hey, I just wanted to again, uh, thank Steve and Kathy. Um, you know, they were at a point working, uh, working hard. Uh, I'd like to also thank Tim and Ron from Parks. They were up there working very hard too. I'd like to re-, uh, thank Scott, he was the archaeologist that donated his time uh, to observe up there to make sure, you know, we weren't making any mistakes. And of course, uh, Joe Marsh and, uh, River for taking that job on, I, you know, it was a great effort. Hopefully we can start, uh, here pretty quick, getting citizens up there to this great viewpoint that Steve's been working on for three and a half years. So I'd like to thank him for that. I'd like to thank him for his information on the vacation rentals. Um, I, I, you know, and I do understand polling and those kinds of things, uh, but I have seen. polling and those kinds of things. Uh, but I have seen firsthand in the last year, we had the vacation rental. You know, a lot of people do go out and they leave us notes. Hey, the crazy Norwegian was great. The salty dog was great. And oftentimes these folks eat out every night. So it's, you know, it's hard to process all the information and it's gonna be, it's gonna be good to work on this in a workshop and get it all sorted out. Uh, because water is the, uh, is the one thing that I'll be looking at closely when we make a decision on this vacation rental. So I'm looking forward to it and I think we work good as a team, all of us. And we have some great volunteers and I really, really do, um, appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim. Hey, Steve, if you're still here, did we miss any of the volunteers that were doing the heavy lifting for you?
It was, uh, Tim Rossi and, and Ron and then my wife who, uh, has already told me I've now got a volunteer for her at the library book sale. I have IOU score. Uh, yeah, there was just a ton of people who came out and we just worked, you know, we moved, you know, 18, you know, 18 tons of gravel. Uh, we moved eight, eight tons of, they were supposed to be 18-inch one-man stones, but as Tim can tell you and you saw, they were more like three-man hogs. They were probably. Yeah, we worked hard, but it's gonna be great. And I, we got a wonderful email from Cassie Rippey, the Coquill tribe, uh, just thanking us so much for the effort and to reduce the erosion. I think we've built a great relationship for the Coquill and that's really gonna come into play with the port redevelopment because that's another site that's protected. Scott, who was our, uh, archaeologist who did this for free, um, is gonna be engaged in that. I mean, he's really bought into the community. Pat, you had dinner with him and you know that we're trying to bring his family back. He's one of these people with children. We'd like to get involved in the, in the community.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Steve. Okay. Well, there's a bunch of mayor concerns, but I'm not gonna bother you guys with it. Um, and we're good on, I, I, I can't see all the counselors. Anybody have anything left?
Oh, um, yeah, I got disconnected, but, um, but I'm back and I, I did have a couple of items.
Shoot.
Um, so I had a thought. Uh, we had discussed wells as a water alternative before and we were gonna survey and a whole bunch of other stuff. And I know that, that all kinda came to an end and whatnot, but I had the random thought that there may be existing wells that are either not used or are used potentially that might be a basis for us to either expand upon or use as a locator to make the well thing a reality or whatnot. So anyway, that, that's something maybe we can think about because, uh, I happen to agree a well would be a far better backup source, um, or additional flow source than Garrison Lake. Um, so, yeah. Um, and, um, uh, uh, I guess the only other thing that, uh, I would really, really like to see, um, is, um, that when the council packets are sent out, that the PDF is, is in a text format, which, which if Jessica needs some help on, I would be able to help her. But with the way it is, it's like scanned in. And so like the text cannot be like copied and pasted or recognized and whatnot. Um, if we can make it so it could be, that would be, um, really a lot more professional, more beneficial. It's better for publishing on the internet and, uh, and it's definitely easier for me personally to make use of. It allows me to also make use of, um, the automatic reading so I can listen to it, which is something I do a lot, but have not been able to do recently. So, um, that, that would be great if that could be a possibility.
Awesome. After you help her with that, could you come clean up the port website? If you got a minute?
I could definitely help you guys with that if you need the help.
I will have to pick your brain on that then.
And the city website, since I can't post videos.
James is right about the wells. And one thing we can do is there's well logs for every well we have here. So we could, you know, look around, see what, cause there's some real high output wells around here by the laundry mound, which we have some property by. And I know out on the old highway, there's some good wells. So that's it. That's a good thought, James. And like I said, I got no mayor concerns. So, uh, let's see, I can't see Greg. Do you have anything for us, buddy?
I'm good. I'm great.
Okay. Mayor's done. Future meetings, we have our regular meeting on Thursday, October 21st, 2021 next month. And then we also have a special session next Thursday at 5:30, which is just gonna be a lot of fun. I'm really excited about that one.
Is it a special session or is it just a workshop?
No, it's a special session because we might have some action items that we need to, to, uh, move on.
Okay. I might suggest we take care of the action items first and then move on to the workshopping stuff last.
Well, we'll see what we can do on that. Cause we never know. That, the, one of the reasons is after the conversation, we wanna have that ability. But I will try to get all the business that we don't know about yet done first. I'll meet you in the middle, James.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so I think that wraps everything up. Thank everyone for joining us. Thanks for the input. Thank you for your volunteerism, including all the counselors. Jessica, thank you for the good reports. And I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at 8:19. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Goodbye.
Enjoy your evening.
No.
This conference is no longer being recorded.